We're going to get started now. Thank you, councilmen, and good morning to everyone. So, this is, to a large degree, a momentous day. I know a lot of people have been waiting for this day in a very public way. I know there was a number of things that were done that led us to this point. I'd like to take a moment before I get into my official script. You know, I've got to read the script. But I'd like to thank this lady over here, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, because I can recall when she was banging the drum for local control a long, long time ago, right? And some of us were questioning whether or not that was an appropriate move because of our concern about state funding. You know, state funding, it was marginal, but, you know, and Janie, I just want to thank you so much, you know, you, thank you so much. And obviously, I would like to thank everyone else who has been a part of the process that led us to this point. It's really, really appreciated all of the work that people have done, their commitment, all of the things that got us to this point. But saying all of that, the simple reality is that we have a whole lot of work to do. So I'll get into the script. All right. So, the hearing is called to order. I recognize the presence of council, members of the Board of Education, and the mayor. This public meeting and hearing of the council, the Board of Education, and the mayor are for the purpose of coordinating our activities for the improvement and benefit of public education in Philadelphia as required by Section 12209 of the Home Rule Charter and the Council Resolution 181014. Mr. Christmas, please read the title of the resolution.
Resolution 181014, calling for the Council Committee of the whole to convene public meetings and public hearings pursuant to the educational supplement of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to review the administration, management, operations, and finances of the school district and adopt plans to coordinate the activities of the Board of Education, the mayor, and the city council for the improvement and benefit of public education in Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. In seating here with me today are Mayor James Kenny, Board of Education President Joyce Wilkerson, Board Vice President Wayne Walker, School Superintendent Dr. William Height, Board Members Julia Danzy, Letitia Hinton, I'm going to say Hinton, I don't want to butcher your middle name, Mallory Fix Lopez, Lee Huang, Dr. Maria McCollin, Dr. Krista McInley, and Dr. Angela MacIver, and Student Board Representatives, and welcome, welcome. We really appreciate your commitment, Julia Frank and Alfredo Pratiko. I would like to welcome all of you here today for the beginning of what I am sure will be a productive partnership for the benefit of public education in the city of Philadelphia. I believe that working together, we will set a standard that will far surpass anything that we've ever done in the past. So, real briefly, I'll go over today's agenda. I'll first recognize Mayor Kenny for remarks, and then Board President Joyce Wilkerson will then introduce board members and discuss the board's hopes for building on a collaborative relationship with city council and the mayor, and the board's partnership committee, and the Student Board Representatives will make a presentation on what the board has achieved to date. Dr. Height will then make a presentation on school opening, key district initiatives, other issues, followed by a questions and conversation period. Depending on the flow, we will determine where we get the public comment in, so it's going to kind of take it as it comes, because there may be potentially a number of individuals who are interested, and if that's the case, we may have to take a brief break. Okay, so, right now, I'd like to introduce our mayor, Champion of Education, Mayor James Kenny.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's nice to be back in chambers. I obviously don't get here much anymore, other than our budget address, but I want to thank you for hosting me again. I'd like to thank the council president and all members of city council for the opportunity to speak today, that this is stark first convening among members of council and members of the new Board of Education as required by the education supplement to the Home Rule Charter. We are all here today because we believe that our city's future depends on the quality of our school system. We also believe that all students deserve the opportunities and supports they need to succeed in the workforce and be engaged leaders in their communities. And I'm thankful that city council voted this June to approve a significant increase in local funding to the school district. With the additional $547 million that will go to schools over the next five years, we will be able to protect the hard-won academic gains made in recent years. We can also continue to invest in the strategies that have proven effective around early literacy and college and career readiness. Just over a year ago, in fact, increased investment should be matched with increased accountability to the public. Local control accomplishes just that. And today, our schools are governed by a diverse local school board of Philadelphians. I am proud of this new board and grateful to the members for their willingness to serve and the dedication they have shown in just the last nine months of service. I am proud that the school board has been very intentional in their effort to be more transparent and accessible in their decision-making, highlighted by their new committee structure and more regular public interaction. For example, this Thursday's meeting of the Committee for District Partnerships and Community Engagement will be held at Martin Luther King Recreation Center. The board has committed to providing food and childcare for this event in order to ensure strong turnout and diverse participation. Improving our schools requires bold and collaborative leadership from all of us. When our schools were under state control, it was easy to point fingers and lay blame elsewhere, and harder to align our efforts. Now, our city's future is in our own hands, right where we want it to be. Together, we can ensure that there are quality schools in every Philadelphia neighborhood. We are grateful for the leadership of Dr. Height and for our important partners in this effort, including the PFT, SEIU 32BJ, and CASA. Our teachers, counselors, nurses, school staff, and administrators are indispensable to our schools and to our city. And in Harrisburg, we are fortunate to have a local legislative delegation and a governor committed to equitably funded schools throughout the Commonwealth. In recent years, the hard work of our delegation, through the hard work of our delegation, the Commonwealth has provided additional funding for critical needs in Philadelphia such as school-based health connectors, lead stabilization, and early childhood education. While our schools have returned to local control, the Commonwealth remains a vital and valued partner in the efforts ahead. Local control also invites partnerships from our city's residents, whether they are public school parents, graduates, students, or neighbors. I was impressed by the hundreds of applications we received last winter from Philadelphians willing to serve on the school board, as well as the additional over 100 applications recently submitted for the board's new community and parent advisory council. I encourage residents to attend or tune into the board's committee meetings and action meetings, and seek ways to support our schools. We need everyone's ideas and support. Together, we face complex and deep-rooted challenges. The problems facing our school were years in the making, and they won't be solved overnight. But we can't let that stop us from pursuing our shared goals. Together, I believe we can make significant progress in the years ahead. We can continue to increase attendance, early literacy, college and career readiness, and graduation rates. Each of these strategies will feel, would feed right into the next. We will continue to create community schools that expand programs and services for students and community members. We will continue to bring PHL pre-K to more neighborhoods so more students are kindergarten-ready. We will continue to work with the district operations to create stronger systems and great alignment, and greater alignment with the city. When all of our students succeed, Philadelphia will succeed. Neighborhoods will flourish around a growing number of successful schools. We will attract and support new families and businesses, and with time, it will be easier to sustain a system of quality schools. The investments and personal commitments that we've made in the past year reflect the kind of future that we dare to dream for this city and for its children. But it's not enough to dream. Now the real work begins as we look for more opportunities for the city and the district to work together on our shared strategic priorities, and of course, to advocate together for adequate and sustainable funding in the long term. Members of city council and members of the board, I am proud to work alongside you. Thank you again for your dedication to our students. As I've often said, these kids are all of our children, and they deserve every opportunity to reach their full potential. I just want to say that this, I believe that this effort is the most important thing a city can do to ensure its future, to ensure that the things that we struggle with, like addiction and crime and other things, will continue, will drop as we increase the capability of our students and make them ready to meet their potential, to have jobs that can pay for buying a home and raising families and paying taxes, which is very important. And I just, I think this board is, the time is right. This board is the perfect board. The partnership we've developed with the council president and the rest of this council is extremely important, and we have a great leader in Dr. Height, so I'm very, very happy that we're moving in the right direction, and I thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all can applaud if you want. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your commitment and all your work for our public school children. It's very important. We really appreciate it. I would now like to recognize Joyce Wilkerson, Board Chair.
Thank you, Council President Clark. Want to thank everyone for having the entire board here, the entire Board of Education is represented today. For us, it's a really important and symbolic of the partnership that we have with the administration and city council. Normally, when we come, we're here at a hearing, and we're sitting right over there, being grilled on a lot of issues, but we celebrate this opportunity to have more of a conversation and a meeting to discuss the challenges that we all face with public education. It's actually just a year ago this month that the School Reform Commission, Dr. McInley and the other SRC members voted to disband the SRC. We're now under local control and proud to serve as the city's first mayor-appointed Board of Education in nearly two decades. Quality public education requires sustained and citywide dedication. We're committed to carrying out this public duty, and we're honored to serve in partnership with you. I'm now going to turn it over to Board Member Mallory Fix Lopez and Julia Danzy, co-chairs of our Partnership and Community Education Committee, to walk you through a presentation on the work we've been doing thus far.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity, as President Wilkinson said. I think I have to speak loud enough, though. First of all, I want to say that we, the board members, thank you for this opportunity, and indeed, we have been busy at work. Nine, I think, exceptional board members who were honored to be able to be appointed to this board. We started out in an intense listening session. We started out, we started out with an intense listening session across the city, hoping to hear and looking to hear from all of our constituents, to hear what were their aspirations, what were their concerns for us and for our school district. As a result of that, we then moved into transforming our board, because what we heard was transparency, accessibility, equity. As a result of that, we then began to, one, reformat how we conduct our business. We established committees so that those committees could be able to discuss prior to our monthly board meeting, all of the actions that were to take place, so that every citizen would have the opportunity to have input in those decisions. Secondly, we reconstructed our living quarters there, you might say, so that we could have the public in, so that they can be full participants in all that we did. We also redesigned our way we present materials on the website, so that you could go in and you could really see why decisions were made, all of those things that we did. And most importantly of all, we are now getting ready to establish a parent and community council, which will be able to give us voices into the community and for the community have voices back to us, so that we can be more responsible, more accessible, and more open in what we do. And one of the things we are most proud about is bringing on the board two students so that we can hear the voices of the students, because they are right there every day, and they know. And with that, I wish to turn it over now to our two students, Alfredo and Julia.
So, good morning. My name is Julia Frank.
And I'm Alfredo Pratiko.
And we are so honored to be here today, to be able to talk to you all, and we are just really honored and humbled to be able to serve in this position. So, as student representatives, we have a couple of goals. The first one, we want to hear from students about the ways in which we can best serve them. Alfredo and I both feel really adamantly that our job isn't to present our own opinions, it's to facilitate discussions with students across the city about what's working and what can be improved, and then to present that to the board. Additionally, we want to bridge the gap between the Board of Education and students by both advocating for students and communicating board decisions. While we do want to be a voice for students, and that's a big part of our job, we also want to see students more aware with some of the goals of the board, and to see them more aware of some of the things that the board is talking about. And finally, we want to encourage students to have a more active role in policy and decision-making, so whether that's encouraging students to speak up at meetings, or encouraging them to be more active in their school communities, we really want to see students more engaged.
And as part of our role as facilitators and listeners to discussions, we're going to be visiting schools around the city, including our upcoming one next week at Thomas Edison High School, and we will be releasing a list of more schools that we'll be visiting in the weeks to come, which will be posted on the board's website. And we're working to schedule meetings with different student-led advocacy groups around the city and the district to facilitate a healthy partnership and collaborative partnership between them. And we're really thrilled for this opportunity, and we hope that the students will reach out to us to engage on these important issues and their experiences. Thank you.
So now I'd like, thank you, Julia, and thank you, Alfredo. Now I want to talk a little bit more about board priorities. So Benjamin Franklin said, "Well done is better than well said." And as an educator, and all of us who are, obviously, follow education, know that sometimes in education, there's a lot of talk, and sometimes talking in circles. And one of the things that I, as a resident of Philadelphia and as a new member of the Board of Education, am encouraged by is the recommitment to action, to being well-done here in the city of Philadelphia. So we've heard the commitment of the school district, and under Dr. Height for the last several years have seen that commitment. We've heard the commitment from the city of Philadelphia, and now we're here today to discuss our commitment to the city of Philadelphia as the Board of Education. And we're going to start by going through, in just a little bit more detail, the committees that Julia has already referenced.
Been asked to have the board members introduce themselves, and so, before you, we'll ask the board members, starting with Ms. McColl and Dr. McColl, to introduce herself.
I'm Maria McCollin. Happy to be here.
And Dr. McColl brings a particular expertise in child abuse. She's a, she was a school teacher in the public school system in Philadelphia. She then went on to get her medical degree, and her area specialization, as I said, has been in child abuse. She worked extensively at St. Christopher's and is now running a project in southern Jersey. We're trying to steal her back to the Philadelphia side of the river.
Happy to be back.
Good morning. I'm Angela MacIver, and again, thank you for having us.
All right, and Dr. MacIver, so you know, has, Dr. MacIver has a PhD in math education and has been extensively involved in some of the charter school founding in the city of Philadelphia. Her passion, though, is math education, and she's not going to rest until she sees us mounting new initiatives and having improved results in the area of math education.
And I'm Julia Danzy. Many of you probably already know me, because I'm an old fixture around here, and particularly in the world of social services. Children, mental health, those are my babies.
Mallory Fix Lopez, currently full-time faculty of English ESL at the Community College of Philadelphia, former district employee as a high school history teacher at Thomas Edison High School, and former adjunct instructor of education at Temple University.
My name is Wayne Walker. I'm an attorney. I also do corporate governance in the context of, I work with a lot of non-profit organizations as well as corporate for-profit organizations.
I'm Joyce Wilkerson, former chief of staff to Mayor Street, and currently, I am, work for the president's office at Temple University.
Good morning. Yes, can you hear me? I'm Letitia Hinton, or Letty, as most people know me. I have over 32, 33 years' experience in, with city government, and have worked in the nonprofit world as well for many, many years. My passion has always been working with populations that most people found most difficult to work with, so homelessness was my, was my kind of thing, and social services. I'm presently a grandmom, which I'm enjoying, and I'm also a board member that's on the finance and facilities committee, and we, you know, we just are very excited to be a part of this process, and hope that we'll continue to work in partnership with everyone.
Good morning, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name's Lee Huang. Honored to serve on the school board. Letty and I are honored to be your co-chairs for the finance and facilities committee. My day job is that I'm a senior vice president and principal of E-Consult Solutions, a local economic consulting firm, and two of my three kids are in the public school system, so this is very personal for me. Very honored to serve. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chris McInley. I'm a professor at Temple University, but my career includes 18 years with the school district as a special education teacher, principal, a regional superintendent, and working in central office, and then a stint in the suburbs as superintendent in Shelton Ham and Lower Merion. And I co-chair the Student Achievement Committee with Dr. MacIver.
Further information is available in council members' packets. All of our bios are there.
Okay, so back to the recommitment. So, you know, I'm very encouraged by the recommitment of not only the district, but the city, and now the new Board of Education, to education here in the city of Philadelphia. And as Julia had already mentioned, as Ms. Danzy has mentioned, we've started four different committees. First and foremost, the Student Achievement Committee. Dr. Height will go into more detail about some of the successes of this, around student achievement in the district, but the driver of our work is achievement. And so if you take a look up at the PowerPoint way over here, you'll see, there's a quote there that says, "The interests of our students come first," and that is what we go back for every decision, and consider that before making any decision. Looking at transparency and accessibility, this was a key theme that we heard through listening sessions, and also testimony that we have heard at action meetings and committee meetings, is the need for transparency. I wouldn't say it was just a minor thing that we heard, it was definitely the key theme, it was essentially an outcry of the need for transparency. Establishing our committees has been one driver of that transparency. In education, we have a strategy that we call "Think Aloud." I use this a lot as a reading teacher, where we not only try to get students to the final answer, but we have them, we think aloud to help them understand the process and the critical thinking to get to that final answer or the solution. And so what we have committed to do is to work in the public, so that we're not just giving a decision, but we're having, we're working with the public jointly to come together in that process of decision-making. Going on to, oh, I'm sorry, and a little bit more with transparency and accessibility is gaining shared meaning around those two very big terms. What does transparency mean? What does accessibility mean? And how are we engaging diverse communities in the city of Philadelphia in diverse zip codes? Going to diverse groups of schools, including district and charter, which takes us to the idea of one system of schools. And I just realized, we're not talking about the committees right now, we're actually talking about board priorities, so sorry for the confusion. So the one system of schools, we have talked a lot about the desire for equitable access to good schools. That has been heard throughout our listening sessions and throughout our engagement with the public. And those good schools include both district-operated and charter schools, and we're committed to looking at these schools as one system. So our role as a governing body is different between charter and district schools, but we must see one system to make informed decisions, and this will help to allow all Philadelphians to have access to good schools in their neighborhoods. And with that, we're focusing on quality, access, and funding throughout this one system. And then lastly, we, a priority of ours is financial stability. So none of these goals will be possible without maintaining financial stability, and we're focused on looking for new funding and also making sure we're spending wisely and equitably the existing funds. So that now brings me to the committees. So the committees is what helps, what helps us drive that transparency and helps the public to be engaged in this thinking aloud process to making joint decisions. So the committee structure has been critical for us, and again, pointing out that it has been in the public. With the committees, I'm just going to ask co-chairs to just give a hello, to highlight. So for Finance and Facilities Committee, we have Letitia Hinton and Lee Huang on that side. I think we're kind of divided up by committees a little bit. District Partnerships and Community Engagement, Ms. Danzy and myself, and she's going to talk a little bit more about some of our upcoming work with that committee. For Student Achievement and Support, we have Dr. McInley and Dr. MacIver. And then lastly, for Policy Committee, the chairperson is Mr. Walker. So again, as I mentioned, this committee structure has allowed us to invite the public in the decision-making process. It's important to point out that these committee meetings happen before action meetings, which is a very different structure than the SRC operated under. So several weeks prior to any decisions being formalized, we're meeting with public, with the public, they can come in and give testimony, and the testimony turns more into a dialogue. So it is a back-and-forth conversation on these challenging decisions that have to be made. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back to Julia, to talk a little bit more about some upcoming committee meetings.
We can't stress enough that the best way to communicate with us and to know what we're doing is to attend our community meetings, because in our monthly board meetings, we don't have the opportunity for the dialogue back and forth. And many people will walk out of there saying, "I don't know why they did X, Y, and Z. I don't know what undergirds what decisions they are making." But if you participate in our meetings, you will. But what we ask when you come to our meetings to, come with your issue and come with some suggestions to help us to know how we might have better addressed those issues, because it's a partnership. That's why this committee is named Partnership. It's a partnership. We cannot do it alone, you cannot do it alone. There you will see the listings of our meetings. Please make note of them, please plan to attend them. We also want to make sure that, again, to reiterate, as the mayor said, on the 29th, which is this Thursday, 27th, 29th, on this Thursday, we will be meeting at MLK Rec Center, where we will be listening to a community, and what will we be talking about? Engagement, partnerships and engagement, and how we can better be a part of that. You can also access any of our information over our website, philadelphia.org/schoolboards. There you go. You know it. We're thrilled to be here, we're looking to see from, hear from you, we're asking you, please be a partner in the process. It's one thing to gripe, it's another to join hands and work together for a solution.
Now we have our superintendent, Dr. Height, who will be talking about the work that's been going on in our schools since school opened in August. He needs no further introduction.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to all city council president, Clark, to all of the members of the committee, and thank you for this opportunity, Mayor. Also, thank you for being here, and I do think that this is a unique opportunity, and quite frankly, the promise of local control. And as we think about how do we align resources and services to best serve all of the children in this city with respect to a public education, I think is, as the mayor just indicated, the most important thing that we I think is, as the mayor just indicated, the most important thing that we can do. And I do think as we think about this work, it is really important to ensure that all of 200,000-plus children in public schools have a quality education. And that is what our work is. And I'm going to walk through just a brief presentation, and I know members of council have that presentation already, so I'm not going to go over every slide, but there are some slides in which I want to highlight because it defines our work and it defines the work that we are trying to do. So essentially, what we are charged to do is to provide an education of the more than 200,000 children in public schools, and it is to shape, manage, and improve an organization that provides a high-quality education for our young people. This work, and in particular, my work, is guided by, in shape by, my experiences and beliefs about the capabilities of our children. And as you just heard from our two very talented board members who are students, children are capable of doing magnificent things when given access and opportunity. And understanding that, we will achieve equity only when all students have the resources needed to graduate, ready to succeed as fully engaged citizens of Philadelphia, of Pennsylvania, and of this world. So essentially, in the simplest terms, our goal as an organization is to make sure every child in this city has a great school close to where they live. We are already good at providing great schools in certain parts of the city, as you can see from this slide. We're also good at providing great schools for families and students to choose if they have the ability to access choice. What we need to do is to make sure that every child in every part of the city can get a great education and have a great school close to where they live. This is how we define our equity agenda, and it's explicitly intended to ensure that every child in the city can be a great part or part of the great economic and cultural progress that Philadelphia is making. We're making some progress, and it's really important to highlight that progress. And as you know, we have a school accountability framework that has four tiers, and schools fall into those four tiers, and they're quartiles. It's the lowest tier intervene, watch, reinforce. Highest tier is model. One of the things that we are seeing over the past three years is that we are having more children in our reinforce and model categories of schools than in our intervene and watch categories. And we have fewer children in schools that are intervene, and that is both from the program development, the hard work of all of our staff members who are at those schools, and the work that we have done to focus our efforts on some of the schools that are lowest performing. So we are pleased that 7,600 fewer students are in low-performing schools and almost 5,000 students are in schools in the top two categories. It's really important to also acknowledge when we have received recognition from others outside of Pennsylvania. And it is, I'm also pleased to remind everyone that we had two national blue ribbon schools from Philadelphia in the most recent acknowledgement of high-performing schools across the country. And as a matter of fact, the two schools in Philadelphia were the only public schools in Philadelphia to be named, and only thirteen, only two of thirteen that was named, that were named across Pennsylvania. Those schools are Albert Greenfield and William Meredith, and we are proud of those two schools and the staffs and the leadership and the communities there. We also want, I also wanted to highlight some, as that board member Fix Lopez talked about, I wanted to highlight some of our continued academic progress. And this is important. And while we have a lot of work still to do, we have seen our PSSA and Keystone results show that our students are continuing to make academic progress. On the PSSAs, a significant number of students moved out of the below basic category. As a matter of fact, students do not get to proficient without moving out of below basic. Five percent or about 2,700 third to eighth grade students move from below basic to higher performing levels. And this, this amount surpassed the state results. We also continue to see progress toward our anchor goals on all eight-year-olds reading on grade level, and we've increased and continue to increase the percentage of students, third graders scoring proficient or advanced on the ELA. And for the Keystone's, the number of students scoring proficient or advanced on the Keystone exams increased in each subject area. And you can see here, in literature, a five percentage point increase, biology, a four percentage point increase, and Algebra I, a four percentage point increase. And that is a, is a testament to the tremendous efforts of individuals who are working with children every day in our schools. We have a strategic plan. We often refer to an action plan that's our strategic plan, and that plan is our working document. And that plan is the working document that details all of our actions, our aspirations, and the goals and our statement of beliefs. We use it as a guide to guide our work, and we are very consistent, consistently focused on a few key initiatives and doing what we know that works really well. That plan has a set of anchor goals, and many individuals have seen and heard about these anchor goals. They're set at 100%, and that's intentional. And it's intentional to represent every single child in this city. And we're focused on four things because we believe as an organization, if we accomplish these four things, then we will have children in great schools receiving a great education. It's also really important to have these four things because there are a million of programs, initiatives, and actions that we could be distracted by literally every day. And so it's really important to focus and be intentional around this work. The next couple of slides talks about some of the major initiatives in and around the four anchor goal areas. I'm going to skip over that, and hopefully, we'll come back to talk about that as part of discussion and conversation. I will move on to page 16. And on slide 16, it talks about some of our other progress, and I want to acknowledge the fine work that has happened with Chief Financial Officer Ori Munson and his team, and the fact that we have now a process for robust financial information sharing. And it is, it details clear annual calendar and financial decisions, and you can see here their schedules. We have quarterly reports that we do for this council, and we have easy-to-access website with current and historical financial information at the school level and at the district level. And, and we just released a quarter one report, and that report continues to project a narrow operating surplus for FY '19 and a positive year-end fund balance for this fiscal year. The federal government, and while they reduced but did not eliminate Title II funding for FY '19, we, that has allowed us to release another $10 million that we had formerly held in reserves for federal cuts. And the current year expenditure and projection for those, for that, for the $10 million is to do and complete work around paint stabilization and for increased special education services. The other slides that I want to draw your attention to is some work around the buildings, and in particular, the work that we've done to improve school buildings. And so in addition to all of the other areas, one area that we will continue to focus on is our school building. Our operations and facilities management teams, they updated cleaning standards to ensure all buildings are clean to a, to the same standard. These guidelines clearly spell out the types of daily cleaning that must be completed in order to ensure safe, healthy environments for students and staffs. In addition to that, we had projects that happened over the summer. These projects are continuing throughout the year. One project, which received a lot of attention in the spring, was the lead paint stabilization and plaster repair project. This is, this work will include a completed assessment of all, at all 40 locations identified for lead paint stabilization or plaster repair. We're pleased with the additional monies that we've received from the governor, and we are also pleased to work with advocacy groups and advisory groups to finalize a methodology to select future work locations. But after this work is completed, an estimated 650,000 square feet of space will be improved and made safer. And at the end of this project, that means 31,000 students will be served in improved facilities and in classrooms. In addition to that, we had design, construction, and renovation projects that included 59 projects assigned to a design professional, 40 active construction projects valued at almost $172 million, and over 3,600 pre-K through third-grade students being served in modernized classrooms. That happened in, across 160 classrooms across 11 schools, and that brings a two-year total to about 240 classrooms across 18 schools, helping to improve the conditions for almost 8,000 young people. In addition, we have environmental remediation projects, and since September, district staff has responded to 35 indoor environmental quality events, and district staff have also attended meetings to discuss the IEQ events and answer questions with school communities. The next slide details some photos of the lead paint projects that will, that have started and have been completed in some cases, but will be going on until the 40 schools are all addressed. And you can see some of the examples here with the work across the top of the slide that is occurring in schools, and then you can see the finished products at the bottom of the slide. In addition, there are many successful and ongoing collaborations, and as I indicated at the start of my presentation, to me, this is the promise of local control. And one of the things that I think is really important is the common goal with Phil Pre-K, PHL Pre-K, around quality Pre-K expansion. And one of the ways that we will get more children reading on grade level by the time they're eight years old is to focus on having more children who are able to access and more families who are able to access these opportunities. As the largest single provider of quality Pre-K in Pennsylvania, the school district knows firsthand the benefits of quality Pre-K to our young children. We are thrilled with Mayor Kenny, and when he announced that the city would be expanding Pre-K to thousands more students, and we work hand-in-hand with the mayor's office of education to work towards a future where there are sufficient and affordable high-quality Pre-K seats in every neighborhood across the city. In addition to the almost 2,000 Pre-K seats added by PHL Pre-K, the school district has added another 2,200 quality Pre-K seats over the past four years using state and federal dollars. In 2018, the school district is serving over 10,703 and four-year-olds at over 160 sites. Also want to thank, and I know he just left, but I wanted to thank the council president for also providing the district with the funding to add a, to add play equipment at the Duckery School, and that installation, particularly for Pre-K program, was just completed, was completed just before Thanksgiving. In addition, we have done a lot of work around special education to improve the services and address challenges. And we've done work to align the individual educational plans or IEPs to standards-based instruction, ensuring that those children with IEPs receive standards-based instruction. We've looked at protocols and processes and systems for instructional collaboration. We anticipated early intervention and prevention programs and developed research-based models for effective programming. And you can see there's an acronym up here, Building Strong Systems of MTSS. It's really important. That means Multi-Tierred System of Support. And so one of the, I'll finish with how I started, and I do think that it's also important to acknowledge that this is Giving Tuesday, and we like to take advantage of these opportunities to ask for contributions for schools for specific things. This year, we have a citywide investment in an undeniable promise of music education. And I'm happy to say that we now have music in all of our K-8 schools, and that program is now available to all of those students. But we want to ensure that on Giving Tuesday, we're using this as an opportunity to hashtag Philly in Harmony, which is a donation that will help support music education across the city of Philadelphia. And as I indicated a few minutes ago, I want to conclude with how I started with, I think the future of our students is limitless, and I think when given access to opportunity, then our young people have shown us over and over again that they can do great things. And I think it's our collective responsibility to make good on this statement that the future of our students is limitless. So with that, Mr. Council President, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much, Dr., Board Chair, members of the board, obviously the mayor. At this time, we're actually prepared to entertain some questions from members of council, of the board members, Dr. Height. I don't think the mayor and I will be taking any questions today.
He asked us.
That's not, that's not, that's not in the script. But thank you. So I understand we're having some technical difficulties. Christmas is this okay? Is it working now?
It's flashing.
So they don't flash. I don't know. Is this the line of, oh, okay, all right. I don't mind if they flash. All right. Well, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you, Chair Wilkerson, Superintendent Height, and members of the Board of Education. This has been one of the main reasons why it's, it's been such a great opportunity to have this long journey towards local control and have this dialogue. I know one of the most important things about the Board of Education and city council is that both of us are functioning as oversight bodies for the school district of Philadelphia. And we have had a chance to sit down with both Superintendent Height, Ori Munson. We have education committee hearings in which we have that. But this is a real opportunity for the two of us as these oversight entities to have this conversation about what it looks like for the overall goals, areas where we're looking to build out a better understanding. I want to be thoughtful about the conversations and the questions that may be asked because I think these are areas that are long intractable problems. And it's not a suggestion that by raising them that we are inherently critiquing anybody, but that we're trying to find our way through a thicket of problems that are deep-rooted within communities, within our society itself, and the struggles that we're having. So, you know, I think that some of the areas that I'd love to talk to you a little bit about to start, and I know there'll be a round of questions as we go through this, is to talk a little bit about some of, some of the major issues that are going on with the school district. I would like to emphasize the amount of praise that we have for the school district, especially in terms of financial stability, in terms of the investments around music education, in terms of investments around stable staffing in many core areas that we've lacked. But, you know, really to focus in on some of the areas that have been stuck with us for a while and try to understand them. I do want to just make one quick note about one of your areas of four priorities. I really support all of them, including ensuring quality schools, but I would like to suggest rather than one system of quality schools, that we talk about an equitable system of quality schools. We know we can build quality schools, especially with a city in which we have enormous neighborhood and housing segregation, race segregation. You know, we don't want quality schools to be predetermined by factors of wealth, race, class, et cetera, that have long tracked quality in education. I think our striving is towards equity and whether all schools can become equitable, representative, and quality school institutions for everybody. But I want to talk primarily about staffing within the district. I think staffing is one of our core concerns. You know, I am concerned about, about, you know, some of the more recent notice, notifications on the school district's website indicating upwards of 100-plus teaching vacancies. There are 1,000-plus teachers with emergency certifications. Many of them are in special education. You know, we have a lot of concerns about vacancies in core areas in which a school or or a child will not fulfill a state mandated, mandated curriculum requirement. For example, West Philadelphia High School, which as my understanding does not have any foreign language being offered currently, or did not as of earlier this year. There are a number of special education vacancies that you're aware of. So, you know, among these questions are, how are we measuring success in recruitment and retention around school staffing? And do you feel as a board that we're meeting our standards around that? And are the strategic, you know, the consultants and folks that you're using, are they actually helping us get to a place where we are more effectively bolstering the teaching force, addressing vacancies that are happening? And what are we doing about children who are not receiving their state mandated curriculum requirements? Or schools that are not fulfilling state mandated curriculum requirements? And are, also are you tracking those?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Let me just ask Dr. Height first to respond with some factual background, and, and then we'll try to, you know, give input as a board to some extent.
Sure, thank you.
Not much detail.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for the question, and particularly around staffing. And one of the things that I've done, and as, as you were asking the question, I was thinking, man, I should have gone over the slide. The, one of the things I think is important is that this continues to be an area where we are focusing a lot of efforts, because that's one of our goals, to ensure that 100% of schools have great principals, teachers, and support staff members. And it is also important to indicate that we've made great progress in this area over the past four to five years, where when we begin the year, we have 99% of all teacher vacancies filled with almost 10,000 teachers. That is a pretty substantial set of, that's a pretty substantial goal. Our work continues to be the active recruitment and retention of individuals in schools. With that number of individuals who work in schools naturally through attrition, through retirements, through individuals who've relocated, there are mid-year moves that occur, and we have to address those mid-year moves. But one of the things that I think is important to address, as you just talked about this, is that, so this year, we hired 21 new principals, 771 new teachers, 47 new assistant principals, four new assistant superintendents, and we've also started a teacher residency program with 49 new teacher residents, almost 40% of them are teachers of color. We did start this year with a 99% teacher fill rate. It's important to carry that rate throughout the school year because the later in the year that these openings occur, the harder it is to fill that position with a, with a candidate. And so one of the things that we want to do is continue to recruit year-round for these types of positions, and recruit into teachers of color into these roles as well. We do have a system that is a dashboard. It's a performance dashboard that looks at the hiring, the vacancies. We do that on a weekly basis so that we are well aware of where those vacancies occur so that we can get individuals to those places. And I'll let then the board president talk about the accountability from the board's perspective.
I think it's one, it's one of those issues that we're tracking through our student achievement committee. It is, the way we operate is use the, the committee meetings as a, a way of getting a background in what's going on. We both, both in order to support decisions that we have to make in our action meetings, but also it helps to shape our priorities. Before too long, we'll be going over the budget, trying to figure out where we need to be spending more money, and that impacts directly the kind of talent we can attract to the district. We also use it when it comes time to set, set goals for the superintendent and evaluate the superintendent. These are issues that we're aware of. We understand we have these vacancies. It comes up in the leveling context, so they're issues that we grapple with. We don't have specific goals yet. I think it's something that will likely evolve in, in the coming years. I don't know if either of the, Ms. Dr. MacGyver is one of our, our student achievement.
Hi. This is absolutely has been on our radar, and it's probably one of the most critical issues around education here, but I think one of the bigger issues of concern is the number of teacher education candidates coming out of schools now. And that we need to figure out how to recruit teachers to Philadelphia instead of Lower Marion and Bucks County and all these other places because the numbers that every school district is dealing with have dropped dramatically. And, and that is, it is absolutely probably the most critical piece in terms of moving achievement up.
And I think addressing climate. I mean, one of the things that I think what we're seeing, and, you know, a major issue that I have is that, look, it's always going to be a struggle, and since the Corbett era, you know, of disinvestment around schools, we've seen a real drop-off around, you know, teaching being a valued profession. At the end of the day, though, like in New York City, there's one in 10, for every 10, for every position open in New York City, there's something like 10 applicants. In Chicago, it's seven applicants for every position. In Philadelphia, it's something like two. So we do have an issue that, that I, you know, it is bigger than any one person. But I will also say that as much as I fought with Arlene Ackerman over issues within the school district of Philadelphia, she did prioritize the staffing of her schools. She made sure that schools opened with a teacher in front of every child, classrooms were filled. It became a number-one obsession and goal for her. And, and I respect her tremendously for that. And so I think that that's, you know, one of the areas that I'm concerned about is how we get into a situation in which, like, Hill Friedman doesn't have a science teacher, in which math is missing from a number of different schools like Southern. So it is a climate as well as like a academic and curriculum issue as well. And I, you know, like, I think we should continue the conversation about how the student achievement committee is working on it, but I'd like to see us think about what that looks like.
All right. Councilwoman, we had a, I know, I know, I got it. Councilwoman, yeah, we got a pretty long list. But Dr. Height, I think, wanted to put some more information on the table with respect to your last statement, and then we'll, then we'll recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Just, just two things I think is important to respond to. One, Councilwoman, is that, so the, we do have a number of emergency certifications and those, that emergency certification is a running total over years of time. So, so one example is that 72 of those emergency certifications are school nurses who also need the state certification to be a school nurse in Pennsylvania, and we, a number of emergency certifications are about 500, not 1,000. In addition to the statement about the number of candidates per, per position, I do think that, number one, depending on what the position is, we have, we could have 10, 20 candidates or much fewer. But I do think it's also important that if there's a comparison to Chicago in, in particular in this case, it, it's also important to understand that Chicago is also carrying a 6% vacancy rate. We're carrying a 1% vacancy rate. And while they may have a lot more candidates in the pool, they have a lot more positions vacant at, by schools than we do. And over the past several years, we've actually made a lot of progress in this area, and will continue to make progress in this area. But I do think we do have to continue to move individuals into the teaching profession so that we will have more candidates to fulfill these roles. The second thing, though, I think is equally important, is making sure that when we attract individuals to the profession, that we keep them here. And we keep them here through having systems and supports and structures that are supportive to them and will attract them and will encourage them to remain.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning. With protocols having been established, I'm gonna jump right into my questions. Bravo for music in all schools K through 8. That's a big deal, and we come a mighty long way, so that should not be, that should be underscored. In all of your slides, I saw nothing around, and nothing doesn't mean it doesn't exist, I just need to hear about it, MBE, WBE, where that is infused in all of those committees that the board has established. So that might be a policy question to Mr. Walker.
I seem to have a lot of choices here. One of them work. Thank you, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. We appreciate your bravoing us on the music in every schools. But we do find extremely important to have business diversity procurement, and that is one of the top issues of this board, so much so that we've asked our finance and facilities committee with whom co-chair Lee Wong, as well as co-chair Eddie A. Hinton. But co-chair Mr. Wong is an expert in the economics and the marketing and the analysis of business procurement, and he along with his committee will be leading that effort. But it's, but it is indeed a priority for this board of directors, the Board of Education.
Please, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think we have, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and so we are working on developing a new policy. It'll require new practices. The board's goal is to have the new policy in place for the start of the school year.
Okay.
I think there are a lot of opportunities we want to take advantage of, like making sure that our students have opportunities coming out of all the contracting work that we do, and I, that's something that Dr. Height has been working on, and so he may want to speak specifically about, about some of that work. But we, you know, our program is not the program that we want, and we intend to move aggressively to have something in place come July 1.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about?
I am aware of solar states, the couple of efforts with high schools around environment sustainability. Those are great models that need to be emulated and duplicated across the system, but there may be others. Dr. Height?
Yeah, so we have quite a few, as a matter of fact, and, and some with the city's fleet management and children.
Fleet management, okay.
Children moving directly into fleet management positions out of high school. In addition to the good work that's happening around projects like Penn OSIS, we also have an apprenticeship program for our district, carpenters, electricians, steam fitters, and it's one more, and plumbers. And those are young people who are starting upon graduation from high school, that have graduated from one of the CTE programs, and those individuals are then employed by us as they train.
Okay.
As a, with one of those professionals. And then those individuals then receive their certification and then do that full apprenticeship for two years, and then we will employ them as a district employee in one of those areas. And so it started with five young men, and now we've had over 100 applications for more children. So the second year of that, we now have 17 additional individuals who are doing that, and many of them are females as well. So these are young people who have been, who were students who are now working as a part of, working with our professional staff and will then become employees. And we are looking for ways to move that to the high school experience so that they're actual 12th graders who are then paid as a part of their learning, and then they become employees or could become employees with the school district.
And therefore build careers.
Yes.
Before my time is up, second question. In June, Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez introduced a resolution that I supported, and many of us did, that calls for a task force on the use of school buildings in the city. And with the goal of not working at cost purposes, knowing that you now have a committee devoted to facilities, and with the emerging work of, of this committee, I'm interested in, in what? Any connectedness with rebuild on the city side as relates to the school buildings where you've shown us in the side, in the slides, where there, where there's been work already, and around libraries? Any connectedness between the city's libraries and schools that need facility upgrades and the like? So I guess I'm speaking to partnerships as relates to what makes sense when it comes to school facilities.
Yes, yes, and thank you for the question. And we actually, so I'm gonna allow the facilities committee to, to respond to some of this, but it is important to also update council that we've been meeting actively with the city, and we have a meeting where many of the divisions and departments are coming together to look at solutions to these types of challenges, historical challenges. And so how, who has responsibility and just kind of working out some of the things that have always been a challenge with that. Our next meeting is tomorrow with this, and we've been focused on rec centers, athletic fields.
Very good.
I mean, that are city-owned and school-owned, libraries as well, and other community centers or schools that could serve as community centers if in fact given access. And so we're looking at it from the perspective of outer school time, recreation in parks, and libraries as well. And so we are trying to come up with a coordinated way to look at all of the assets, if you will, and provide opportunities for communities to engage with those assets, regardless of where they are and regardless of if they're with the city or with the school district.
My time is up. My comment on that is, finally, the stars are aligned, where you have leadership at the school district, and leadership on council, and leadership at the school board, at the board level, and in the mayor's office, where, where, where all of us believe philosophically it makes sense to see how we can reduce costs and operate in the way that you just defined. 15 years ago, we didn't have that. And while we had small conversations and huddles, there was no intention to have a broader conversation at this level to ensure the goal you've just articulated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah, Councilwoman, thank you for bringing that up. I actually was just talking to Dr. Height earlier, and gotta give you guys credit. You did a great job on Duckery School, where the city forwarded the money of capital dollars, and lo and behold, I'm riding down 15th Street, and I see this awesome playground at Duckery School, and kept the promise to those young people over there. And so it can work, and the simple reality is in years past, there was always this issue about the SRC, state control versus the city of Philadelphia, and even though we got an illegal opinion, that we still could commingle dollars as it relates to capital improvement. Now, it should be official. It should be a no-brainer that we can in fact do that. So Councilwoman, thank you for bringing that up, and the further conversations around the co-location, all the other things that I know Councilwoman Sanchez was talking about. But thank you, Doc. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome to city council. I want to first say that I see the move being positive for this local control, excuse my, I was yelling for the Sixers and Eagles, so my voice was a casualty. But I see the needle moving in the right direction based on your quantifying some of the achievements that over the years we've been, been moving towards. I have two questions, and the first one is dealing with the school to pipeline, prison pipeline. As a member of the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Committee, it is of concern to me that there are certain segments of the student population that are at risk and that have a higher potential for poor outcomes. There's 20% of folk going to college campuses no matter what we do. That's gonna, they're going. There's another group that are, and I want to focus on, no one, no kid is, it's, it's not predestined that a youth has to wind up in this category. But it seems that there are two groups that are of particular endanger. One of them are the kids in foster care. There was a recent article, I believe my colleague Helen Gim was cited in, about that concern and about how exponentially greater danger they are. how exponentially greater danger they are in that regard. So I want to hear, and this is a stat that, that kills me sometimes, out of the 48 zip codes in the city of Philadelphia, 11 of them populate 90% of the people in our county prison. Out of the 48 zip codes, there are 11. And if you were to draw a map over those 11 zip codes, those house some of our most challenging schools. So is there a subcommittee, is there a subgroup, Letty, that is focused on that particular group, and what is the strategy?
So we can, so one of the things I think is important, and we're just talking about what committee, because several things fall across multiple committees, and it could be the, it could be the Engagement Committee, or the Achievement Committee, or some, so several of these things fall across, and we're still working out just kind of how to, and it could fall into the Policy Committee. But I want to speak to this from the perspective of policy and the steps that we've taken as a school district over the past several years. And so one is something that is, that is receiving national attention now, and that's what was called the Arrest Divergent Program, that was started in conjunction and collaboration with the Philadelphia Police Department, with the former commissioner, and that work is still continuing. And over the past three years, we now reduce by about 600% the number of children who are arrested in schools for things that in many cases didn't start as criminal behavior, and that's through the Arrest Divergent, because then what is happening, and I think we did a, we did a presentation on that several years ago, a year ago. What's happening instead of, we are actually not processing those children through a normal intake structure, but instead matching those young people with counseling and to address the real problems that are existing there. In addition, we have then revamped our Code of Student Conduct, if you will, and that Code of Conduct is a policy around who can be suspended, what things they can be suspended for, and we've actually continued to look at that, and it's been informed by students and staff members and community members and the public on ensuring that there are specific things on which individuals can make decisions about putting children out of school, and there are specific things on which they can't. So you, you can't just have general disruptive behavior. And that used to be something in the code, the conduct code, that individuals could be suspended for. So one of the things that we are focused on is working in collaboration with Behavior Health, working with DHS, looking at the policies that the Board governs around student discipline. In addition, the work that we've done to implement positive behavior intervention, restorative practices in schools, conflict resolution, and we've trained a large number of our staff members on trauma and recognizing trauma. So those are some things that we've done to create different conditions in schools so that young people feel like they have a place to go to talk about issues that are still challenges.
So that's a good start in the right direction. As a former counselor at the House of Emoja, I clearly understand if you don't get on top of this, in the juvenile end, you'll see them again in the adult end. And so intervention is important, both in truancy. Truancy is a red flag for juvenile justice interaction. If a kid isn't in school, he's doing something that he shouldn't do nine times out of 10. So if we look at that, I think that's important. In light of recent, um, issues with Glenn Mills, in light of recent issues with Wordsworth, is the Board going to take a look at schools, expanding the role of schools for troubled youth, but also overnight schools, the possibility of expanding that in some of the vacant facilities we currently have, particularly directed at parents that are overwhelmed because they're single parent out of households. So if you look at some of these stats and draw correlations, they are, it puts our youth further at risk. So some thought needs to be given to that population because it has so many other positive, um, positive in care. So foster care, troubled youth, and some type of in-house way that we address that population in some form. So something to think about.
Yeah, so you, you heard earlier from Sahiya Hinton about her, her work around vulnerable populations, and, and so she's, she's also helped us drive at this point and continue a lot of the work that we've already done around this, and working in collaboration with Behavior Health, working in collaboration with DHS, and really focusing on those opportunities for youth to be exposed to educational opportunities that are more in line with some of the circumstances like night, if, if individuals need to go to school at night because they're working during the day, or they have other things, or if individuals want to come back to school. So we've expanded programs for youth who are system-involved. We've also expanded night courses for students into parts of the city that weren't, that did not have those, those types of programs before. And so we're going to continue to do that until we can say we are serving all vulnerable youth well.
So, so when you come back for a budget, I'm gonna be looking for answers to that question.
I think that on the Board itself, there are a number of us who have social service backgrounds, you know, in terms of Julia, I'm sure this is a hot issue. I see her smiling over there. It's, you know, this is, I would say is, is not a committee-specific issue. Certainly something that we probably want to pay attention to. We've already heard Dr. Hyatt really talk about, from his perspective, how we're looking at children within the context of the school district themselves, and what we can do to prevent them from getting caught up in that system. So I think that you're, that we should probably continue to have that conversation and figure out what are the best practice strategies that are out there to try to address this issue, recognizing, you know, that some of it may involve people outside of the Board, of course, right, in the school district, in terms of trying to have those conversations like DHS and so on and so forth.
Indeed, our children are in a state of crisis. We've been visiting some schools, and our teachers and our principals are, they're social workers. They're basically, because their kids come in traumatized, children in Kensington who are walking past scenes that are overwhelming for them, who are coming out of homes that are overwhelming for them. And our foster kids, the, the issue is, we, we are good, let's put it this, we have begun to go down the road of good collaboration between our city services and the school district. Clearly, we need to sit down as a group and a task force almost, and determine how do we do it. We need to move out of offices and into where our children are. It is, we've been trying for years to get DHS to be going to community, working there. Our kids need immediate involvement, not a referral and then we'll get to you. And so those are some of the things we have to do. We certainly are aware of the issue you talked about in terms of kids who are coming out of some of the schools where they were for disciplinary purposes, or they were there for placement. They come in and they're behind because the educational track wasn't the same. And that is something that it has to be collaboration between DHS and the Board of Ed, the school district, in terms of how do we make sure, again, equity, that it is applicable no matter where a child goes. And then I have to cha, I want to charge you, please, your parents, they come to you, they're, you're in the community, you have offices. Our parents must get engaged. If our parents aren't engaged, we'll never have prevention. Yeah, we talk about intervention, but we have to have prevention to stop the pipeline going up to the bigger pipeline, because it doesn't work, as that old adage goes about, when you're up at the top and you're grabbing the ones who are trying to try, you know, down at the bottom and you're grabbing them out of the water. Go up there and find out why you're getting in the water. And that's something we have to do. We have to really cut out all the walls between all our services, and we have to come together and identify issues and then apply services to them.
Having, having heard that gives me confidence. Finally, because I have to share the mic, Council President, Councilman Heening, myself, went up to that press conference, it was $4.2 billion worth of capital repair. Who's in charge of working that through, because that's a hefty load, and how do we pay for it? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I want to say how pleased we are to have this new school board and happy to have all of you here. Just last week, in fact, the date's on the 16th, because I have the article here, the governor was listed as saying that he's not so interested in Keystone exams, but the future-ready PA. What do you all think about that as a new program? He said not no child left behind, but not so much on the standardized tests to judge kids that we've been used to in the past. What do you all think about that?
We have Dr. McGinley, our own, our own opinionated.
We are, we are now in the process of, of meeting with the state around the new expectations under the ESSA plan. The Keystone exams continue, to the extent to which they count toward graduation is the, is the variable here. The Keystone exams are, are good assessments. How they're used is, is the question. And our Student Achievement Committee is going to have much more conversation about this at, at an upcoming meeting, because we just met yesterday with the state around the changes in the, in the state's position around the exams and the new model for, uh, uh, school accountability.
Okay. Dr. Hyatt, you mentioned fleet management, and we had a minority company come to us recently, in fact, it's African-owned, who's interested in trying to apply. He said there's something like 34 contracts or something like that. Is there availability for other people to apply for, for contracts to drive kid, kids on school buses?
Well, there are always opportunities for individuals to apply, and we release those, we do release those contracts. When I was talking about fleet management, I was talking about the young people who are finishing our automotive programs, who are then working for the city in the city's fleet management department. And, um, and there are several schools that provide a significant number of those young people, Randolph being one, Swenson being another.
Yeah, I heard that that was good, but it just.
Yes, so the answer to your question is yes.
Opportunity. And I wanted to know how you all feel. You know, I am so glad to have a new board because the charter versus public school has been a nightmare forever. And, um, and you know, most of us love both, and most of us have been very frustrated with the fight and that we couldn't get, you know, that it just wasn't working out. And I just wondered how you all see the issue and us moving forward.
I think the one thing, well, I know that the Board agrees that our focus has to be on quality education.
Of course.
And it, it doesn't matter if it's in a traditional public school or a charter school. We're, we are for quality education experiences for our kids, and so we're not fighting the charter versus traditional public school fight. We do have concerns around the way the charter program operates in Pennsylvania. We have what everyone recognizes as one of the, the worst charter school laws in the country, and it makes it difficult. Kids migrate back and forth between charter schools and public schools. You know, teachers are migrating, schools are moving into neighborhoods. You know, it, it is not a coherent system. So when we talk about one of the Board's priorities, it's trying to work towards shaping it into a system that services all kids, that supports education within neighborhoods, and we're not there yet. But the fight for us is not charter versus public, it's trying to drive quality seats into all neighborhoods for all kids. And so we look forward to working with you. The state's going to be considering legislation around charter schools in the coming months, and I think we'll speak with a much stronger voice if folk in Philadelphia go together, you know, with a position around quality seats for all kids in the city. And we're not there right now. But I, I agree with you. It's, it, it has been a destructive force rather than the kind of constructive collaboration that it needs to be for the kids.
And I would like to add that, I mean, our parents see schools as, whether they're charter or district-operated schools, they see them as schools, and they make choices for their children. And many families have, have children in both kinds of schools. So they, people, the market is, is open in terms of, of opportunities for families to go to traditional neighborhood schools or, or to charter schools. We, the district, needs to catch up in terms of, of having that same view that our families already have. The lack of structure in the state law, the lack of oversight in the state law, makes our charter school office kind of the local bad guy when it comes to the charter schools, because there is, there's no teeth in anything that the state does. There's no oversight other than what we do in the, in the school district. So the charter school office has a role, and they need to be thorough, and they need to be fair, and they need to ensure that they're collecting data but not intruding into the autonomy of the charter schools. And we need to continue to work on that. But we also, under the new regulations from the state, have a new obligation, under the ESA law, the ESSA legislation, we have a new obligation to support charter schools that are not doing well, in the same way that we have an obligation to support the traditional schools. And that's new work for the school district and new work for the school board to figure out.
Yeah, I look forward to that, so that, um, because you all know that the negative part of it, they're taking the traditional schools' money, and so people ate them. Some parents call us and ask us for charter schools. Some parents call us and just say, can you recommend this school, not my neighborhood school, because that's not good. So we look forward to us working together in a positive manner on charter and public schools. And as you know, we've worked closely with Penn, and we had 43 kids graduating in the new Penn Assist program. And we want to have another program with Drexel and Brandywine. We're trying to help, I have all these institutions in my district, and we are trying, and we were blessed to get an award from CAP last time, too. But we are really committed to helping our young people get jobs and get training. And we've been very serious with Penn and about training young people from schools in their area. We think all the institutions should do that, and we're happy to be a part of that with schools. And we want to always try to use my district as a pilot, so we wanted to start there. But we need to increase the numbers. We're grateful we got 43 young people trained, but obviously, that's not enough. That's just, you know, nothing when we consider all our numbers. So we would like to work with you, collectively, all of you, on training young people in these major institutions who have all the resources and the wherewithal to make it happen so that we can help our young people get to the next step and get we can help our young people get to the next step and get jobs as, as they graduate. And I make myself available and I'm, I'll reach out to you and, and look forward to us working in that regard, okay?
Yeah, we look forward to that. That's one of the things that the partnership committee really ought to focus on. Penn Assist is a real model for what, what can happen with kids. And, you know, I think it's worthwhile for us to spend time looking at how it came about, what the, what each party seems as, seizes the upside for the program because Penn is as excited.
So who should I reach out to?
Yeah, and.
Who should I reach out to?
Reach out to Mallory and, and Julia. They're, the Public Engagement Partnership Committee is focused on those kinds of issues. But I think that's, that's a wonderful model that, that the board needs to become more engaged around.
Thanks. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank School Board President Wilkerson and entire members of the new school board, as well as Superintendent Height, Dr. Height, and all of your staff being here. I think this is a great opportunity and a new collaborative model going forward. I'm glad that we are using the charter in this way to have an opportunity to have the executive branch, legislative branch, as well as, as well as all the principals responsible education in the city of Philadelphia here together to work collaboratively. Dr. Height, looking at your PowerPoint presentation, I just want to raise a few questions based on PowerPoint. On page 17, you make reference to the fact that the school district has a now narrow operating surplus for FY '19 and a part of, and projects a part of a year in fund balance. Can you give those numbers?
I'm going to call Ori Monson up to.
I figured Ori would be coming.
To get the information for you, Councilman.
And as, as Ori is walking to make the presentation, I, I wanted all to talk about what we're doing in reference to Harrisburg. I heard earlier I mentioned a meeting with Harrisburg. Now that Governor Wolf has been elected and will be sworn in in January, as well as additional members of the House and Senate, that I believe will be a little more favorable to our perspective. There seems to be an opportunity, and there's been some discussions I've heard about, about looking at the funding formula for next year. So I'm curious if there's been a conversation in that regard, special conversations from the cities of Philadelphia collectively, whereas we have the administration, our legislative branch, as well as the school district coming collectively to Harrisburg to talk both with the governor and all the caucuses in Harrisburg about what changes will be occurring in reference to the funding formula. And hopefully we'll have some type of indication from our third branch of government, the Supreme Court, regarding the William Penn versus Department of Education lawsuit.
Thank you, Councilman. Ori Monson, CFO for the school district. In the quarterly report, which we released about two weeks ago, we revised our projection to be a operating surplus for the current year of a little over $18 million. And that's on a $3.1 billion budget. And now projecting to end the year with a positive fund balance of a little below $180 million.
What was the last one, I'm sorry?
A little below $180 million as a year-end fund balance.
Okay. And the reason why I asked that question about going to Harrisburg, I think now the time before the new administration gets sworn in, as well as new members of the General Assembly gets sworn in, if the city can work collectively to be kind of be proactive, as there, there's definitely a need for additional funding at school districts all around the Commonwealth, regardless of the rural school district, an urban school district, suburban school district. I think anyone from any perspective, regardless of what side of the aisle, realize that we need to address funding in the city, not just City of Philadelphia, but throughout the entire Commonwealth. So I think right now, using this type of conversation where we've, you know, all the principals together here in the city of Philadelphia, we can start talking about how we're going to approach Harrisburg as they're starting to address concepts in reference to a funding formula. Because I think that's something that was put on the back table because of election year, as we go into the first year of Governor Wolf's new term, as well as other, this new leadership in Harrisburg, that's something that we should be trying to address. I think we should use this opportunity to talk about that. Another question I have is on pages 19 through 20 of your handout. And I've talked about some of the work that's been done regarding lead paint. And colleague Councilman Curtis Jones talked about the capital deficit of about $4.2 billion. Do you anticipate any capital borrowing offerings in this upcoming year? And if so, what amount?
In the five-year plan that was adopted last year, we assumed a next borrowing would be basically a year from now, so fall of '19. We did just do a borrowing in March, this past March, of about $275 million. The majority of that, of those funds are still, we still have on, you know, as, as capital projects go. So we're not ready to borrow, but we're setting up hopefully to do a borrowing again as scheduled in the plan, so about a year from now.
Yeah, and I, I was curious if you were going to increase any possible borrowing, considering that the school district recently had their credit rating upgraded. So I think that provides an opportunity for possible borrowing. And then I want to ask more questions about the physical plan of our buildings.
So I don't want to presuppose what Moody's will do. Moody's, Moody's did announce, and we're very pleased to announce, a week ago that they are, have selected us to review us for a possible upgrade, which we'll be actually speaking with them later this week and hope to know something in the next few weeks. Obviously, if we get that upgrade, what that could do for interest rates and what, you know, the cost of borrowing can, is something we always look at when we consider either the timing, moving up possibly a borrowing, or it might allow us to borrow additional principal while paying the same amount of debt service. Doesn't impact our debt service and impact on operating, but we might be able to move from a $275 million borrowing to a 300 or 325. So it, it gives us more flexibility if our borrowing costs are lower.
And you're saying possibly going from 275 to 325?
That's just a.
I know.
It depends on the interest rate impact, obviously. I don't want to put this in there, but what's in the budget is about 275. What I'm saying is we tend to look, so for example, in March, we had originally talked about a 2 to 250.
250.
And we ended up doing 275. So we, we're constantly looking at what the market gives us, what the interest rates are, while staying within the, our, our goal of being, our total debt service annually is below 10% of our annual operating, because we don't want to have that much in fix where we would have to choose between paying bondholders and taking resources out of the school.
Okay. Yeah, I raised that, that question because I know, you know, that recently I introduced legislation on November 15th regarding the special certificate of inspection, following, you know, a number of issues at our schools regarding both asbestos and mold. And I know my colleague Councilman Schwellers also introduced similar legislation regarding lead paint. Look forward to having future conversations with the district and regarding getting some type of financial perspective on the cost and financial impact of that legislation, what that may be. But I think going into a perspective where we're going into regular borrowing, to the extent that we're able to do so, is important, considering we have such a capital deficit and went for a long, well, a somewhat significant period of time where we did not go to the market because of some of our financial cash flow issues, as well as our debt rating. But, you know, trying to have a better physical environment for our schools is very important because not only does it impact our teachers that work in our school buildings, as well as the employees that work there who are non-educational staff, but also our children, which is very important. And I think trying to come up with a plan, that's part of what legislation tries to do, is to try to address that on a, a regular basis and the fact that when a better financial perspective allows us to borrow additional dollars to really make some more capital investments. Moving on to page 22, you made reference to special education. And I'm, I'm curious in reference to some of the ideas you have regarding special education, in particular, as you talked about better collaboration with IEPs and trying to incorporate that into standard education. And that's an area that I focus on very strenuously, based on my own background with a child on autism spectrum. But I'm curious in reference to how you decided, how you're going to implement that going forward.
Thank you, Councilman. And then we, I'm going to have Dr. Malika Savoy-Brooks come up and answer the second question. I want to go back to one of the ones you asked previously about Harrisburg and how we're thinking about that work. And the board president and I and other members of the board are in constant contact with the governor's office and, and other groups from the city of Philadelphia who are there advocating. And it's been our approach, since they do have now a, a funding formula, but it's only on new monies.
New money, right.
To actually run more money through, get more money into basic education funding because that, those new monies will run through a formula.
Right.
And that is, while Philadelphia gets the largest percentage of that, it also is not isolating Philadelphia, which people in Harrisburg react to differently. And so one of the things that we've been advocating and will continue to advocate for is just more money into basic education. And you heard Dr. McGinley talk about a meeting we had with the state yesterday, but even thinking about the new future-ready index, they also talked about how to run, how to direct monies to school districts with schools that are designated for one thing or the other. Now, we have to see what the implications of that will be. But that's also, those are also conversations we're having both with the administration and the legislature.
And just to follow up on that, I think the, it was easier to get that concept done in Harrisburg because it was new money. But I think now that we're going to a new administration, the whole issue of funding for schools is something that people will be more willing to talk about in their first year of a two-year or four-year term. And I think in past periods, we've had not the same message, or well, let me step it back. The message and messengers may have been different coming from the city, where we've may have had school district administration, council. But I think you, the fact that we now have this opportunity where we're having a conversation with all of the principals involved, the executive branch, legislative branch, and also the leadership of our schools, that we should use as an opportunity coming out of this meeting, let's talk about how we're going to go to Harrisburg collectively going forward, what the possibility that there may be a new funding formula in a broader way, as well as there may be some additional resource that may be coming based on what our state's Supreme Court may do. And that starts to change the dynamic of how the city is perceived from an education perspective, because we're now coming as one, as opposed to second floor, fourth floor, 440.
Right. And perhaps running all money through the funding formula.
Right.
Not just new monies.
That would be the goal.
And finally, dealing with the whole harmless provisions.
Right.
That are, that impact us in a pretty significant way and help others.
Right. And then also, I'll make this last point before other people testify. I think in a somewhat unusual perspective, charter schools have also provided opportunity where, from my understanding, you know, you've had a lot of rural school districts that often did homeschooling, where they thought, well, charter schools are just a Philadelphia, Harrisburg, Reading, Coatesville, Norristown issue. Well, now those rural school districts, which traditionally have done homeschooling, are now doing cyber charters, which is a whole separate issue and concern. And so now those smaller school districts are losing money because families that traditionally did homeschooling are now going through cyber charters, which may often be located in urban areas like a Philadelphia or Harrisburg or Pittsburgh. And so now all of a sudden, some of those rural school district legislators who were not as attuned to why this is an issue are now, I guess, waking up to the concern. And I think that also adds the opportunity for changing in the funding formula.
I, I agree with you 100% in terms of working together as all components of Philadelphia. But the statewide conversation that you just alluded to is a really important conversation. I don't think it's limited to the charter school funding, although the charter school funding issue is an active conversation in Montgomery County, an active conversation in Delaware County, and so there are allies there. Special education funding in general is the, is the biggest struggle that our suburban school districts are, are facing. And if there were an increase in special education funding statewide, that would benefit us tremendously. So that's another place where smaller school districts are, are really struggling to maintain programs of quality and, and larger school districts would benefit from that funding. So I do think charter schools, special education funding, and also school security in terms of student safety and security are three areas where we could really push for a statewide conversation that might unleash some additional dollars from Harrisburg.
And that's a good segue to talk about how the district will align the IEPs with standard curriculum education.
Malika, just, and, and just one other point on that, and Dr. McGinley just reminded me of the, there's work that we intend to do around policies, both local policies and state policies around these issues and, and trying to help craft some language that could be considered moving forward now with this administration.
Good morning. I'm Malika Savoy-Brooks, the chief academic officer for the school district of Philadelphia. Our priority and our focus goal for this year and probably the next three years will be ensuring that all students have access and opportunities for mastery of grade-level instruction, which means students with IEPs have that same opportunity. One of the focuses is on how are we ensuring that special education teachers and regular education teachers collaborate regarding the needs of the student? And what does that look like with special education support? And what does it look like when the student is in a regular education classroom? I'm sorry. The other part of that is ensuring that when IEPs are written, we're using standards-aligned instruction in our PDE standards and eligible content to ensure a scaffolding and a continual level of support for the student. Not if wherever the student may fall, based on the academic needs, we have sort of like a platform to tell us, what does that look like, pre-K, kindergarten, all the way up Next, we are looking at, and I heard you say something about autistic support. We are looking at technology more in our classrooms to support students, specifically in autistic support classrooms. And we're still looking at that model. We have introduced one computer-based kind of robot in some of our classes to support students with expressing their feelings, how to, how to express their feelings, communicate with each other. And that seems to be working well. I'm also looking for research-based technology opportunities to support those, the students in the autistic support classrooms. We're also looking at models, effective models for our emotional support classrooms. We need to ensure that students receive the services that they need. In addition to that, they're excelling as they should also.
I know my time's almost up, but I'm glad to hear that. I'm familiar with the Milo technology.
Yes.
However, there's been other types of technology that have been developed by actual former Philadelphia school district teachers that have had some challenges in bringing that type of technology to the district, although other school districts have been using that technology that have been very successful in helping young people on autism spectrum make progress. One of the concerns I've had in reference to IEPs that if you're not very well-versed in the language and the information, the acronyms, it can be very overwhelming to parents, regardless of how many degrees or letters you have after your name or before your name. So that's always been one of my concerns, is that our parents who are going through an IEP meeting, getting a real understanding of what they should be asking for and what should they be pushing the district to make sure that their child, regardless of their background, regardless of that child's learning difference, is getting the full education they can get within the school district. And I'll close with my one last question, and this is a, somewhat of a follow-up to question from Councilman Blaine Reynolds Brown in reference to inclusion. I think Board President Wilkerson made some comments in reference to policies. I'm not sure if those are policies in reference to procurement. City has recently moved forward on best value, which one of the things I, I push for best value as a way of getting more local and businesses of color into the procurement pipeline. I know recently the Economic League has been moving forward with their anchor procurement initiative with some of our large institutions, which could also be an opportunity for the school district as well. So one, has the district looked at trying to change and upgrade their procurement policies, looking at best value? And two, has there been any conversation in reference to some of the anchor procurement initiatives that have come out of the Economic League that started initially in the controller's office?
Councilman, when President Wilkerson spoke about diversity policy, it does include procurement. It will include procurement.
Okay. And is there any, so, and what's the timeline for making those positive? I think the board president said 2019 school year?
Yes, it was set for July 1st.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And just one last thing I'd like to say, I would like to thank Michelle Armstrong from your staff, and I've been working with a lot of labor unions and been trying to pull the CT programs and labor closely. the CTE programs and labor close together, and she's doing a good job of working my staff, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So, we have a potluck appointment today. So, we have teed up in the first round, one, two, three, four, five members of council. So, the question is, do we do the five members of council, then do the potluck, or do we do the potluck and come back through the five members? Democracy is the awesome thing, honestly. Let's finish up, okay?
I guess, Council President, if I could ask a question, are there follow-up questions that Councilmen may have after five?
Yeah, we'll come, yeah, we'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because we still, we have a number of people here, actually, we have a number of people, no, we're going to take, we might take a break, because we have some individuals from the public that want to testify. All right? Okay, so if we can kind of get through this first round. Chair Recognizers Councilman, Tom Bermanberger?
Council President, thank you very, very, very much, appreciate this. I would have to say, something that's come to my attention several times now, in the past couple of days, is that Amazon chose not to come here to Philadelphia. One of the reasons was that they could not count on a stream of employees, in other words, I guess, a pipeline of continuation. I'm sure they would get them on the first round when they were opened up, but in continued long-term, they felt, that's my understanding, that they could not make it. I think educating young people for job opportunities, like Councilwoman Blackwell has said, a pipeline of jobs, I think is essential.
Can I get a point of information? Can I get a point of information?
Okay.
Council President?
Chair Recognizers Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to ask my colleague to just clarify and cite what particular source of information that said that Amazon is basically saying they didn't want to come to the city of Philadelphia, because the school district here in the city of Philadelphia, they didn't have a confidence that we would produce students for the pipeline for, let's want to know the source.
All right, well, I will tell you the source, actually, and I would rather do it privately, but it comes from a source from this administration that we deal with on a regular basis. It's not something I heard on the street, but I don't want to, I don't want to give private conversations in the public realm.
I just want to say, just doing things in transparency and decency and order, you know, with all due respect, if Amazon, if that was part of their reasoning, it should be made public, because I haven't come across any information that said that our school district don't produce students that could be future workers for Amazon. So if there is information from wherever it came, it should be, it should be provided publicly, publicly as a point of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, so noted, but, and I'm glad to, I think this will all come forward at the appropriate time. The question I have is still, is still very relevant. A welder today in the city of Philadelphia makes between $75,000 and $100,000, yet, yet companies are still looking for welders. I know the school district has a good program on welding, but obviously, it's not enough. If you call for a plumber in the city of Philadelphia, no one asks that plumber, how much will this cost? They ask, how quickly will they be here? So my point, or my question to, to Dr. Height, is what's being done to address that? Is there a standing committee on businesses and the school board working together on curriculum that is needed to feed that pipeline of jobs? That's my real question.
Thank you, Councilman, and for the, for the record, and I talked about this earlier, one of the reasons we've expanded the number of children who have access to career and technical education opportunities is just what you described, and it is just what you described around the plumbing and the need for other skill types of labor, and that's why we've created the apprenticeships inside of the school district that provide children with that opportunity to both experience it and learn as they experience it, while they are also compensated for that experience. And so, one of the reasons we have done that, one of the reasons we've expanded the computer stem into many of our elementary schools, is to actually create a set of skills that our children will have with respect to problem solving and coding and producing versus always consuming. And so those are, those are things that we've done as a school district in order to talk about the skills and abilities that we want our children to have. In addition to that, we're also working on a graduate profile that then will, that will outline all of the skills and abilities we expect all graduates of our school district to have. And I do think that from the broader perspective, we should all be thinking about, like, what is necessary in order to provide that type of quality education or education for all children in the city of Philadelphia, and what will it take in order to do that? And I think that that's just not a function of this conversation, but it's also a function of a budget conversation and of policies and investments and state, but I think that that has to be a broader part of this conversation in terms of what is necessary in order to do those things.
Thank you. One final question, and to you, Dr. Height, again, what percent of school buildings do you believe still need work as far as infrastructure?
I don't know the percentage, I know the price, though. 4.5 billion. And I would say the, yeah, I don't know the percentage, we'd have to get that to you, but I would suspect 50% of our buildings are over 70 years old. And when you think about the number of buildings that don't have the electrical capacity to run air conditions in all of the classrooms.
Right.
That, those are all buildings that need attention and need upgrading, so I put that number at about 70%.
I just wanted to address your question in regard to career, technical, education, et cetera. One of the reasons that we created the Community Engagement and District Partnership Committee is to do just that, to increase opportunities in the community for businesses, individuals, parents, et cetera, to engage in the district and to find creative solutions to some of these problems, and to help Dr. Height and the administration find interested individuals, businesses, et cetera, and other community partners to engage in the school district, to engage in education in creative and effective ways. And so we encourage individuals and businesses to come and participate in both the student achievement and community partnerships, community engagement and district partnerships committees. And so we are looking forward to that type of involvement, to increase those opportunities.
I also want to pick up, as co-chair of academic achievement, career, CTE is one of our focus areas, and we recognize that this is, this is an opportunity for us to develop students. I think one of the biggest issues in CTE across the board is changing the way it is viewed in terms of students making decisions to go into these programs. I mean, kids are coming out from welding programs making $80,000 a year, and yet, we can't get, we can't change that image of CTE, and that is really critical. So, I think we're all on the same page here, and we need to figure out how, how we do that.
And I'd like to say too, we'd like, you can help us, in particular, since you're a business person.
Yes.
In terms of increasing internships, our youth need more intern opportunities so that they can learn on the job, so they can get some of the basic mentality of work skills that are necessary for succeeding and for wanting to even pursue further in the careers.
And if I could just quickly comment on that really fast, Councilwoman Parker and myself have sponsored a resolution studying the German apprenticeship program, which we will have hearings in the future, working together, and I think it would be something well to hear from, really from everybody as well.
And I think ultimately, it comes back to the shared meaning we discussed around partnership. What's partnership mean? It's two-directional, and so how does partnership look? How does it feel? How do you sustain partnership? Is it a relationship with industry that dissolves after one individual instructor leaves that school? Or is it a relationship with the district, and it can sustain, you know, a variety of individuals in and out of schools? Obviously, we want to have stable teaching staff, but at some point, somebody does, does move on. So I think what, one of the bigger things that we are focusing on is what is partnership?
I think, and I think the quicker and the better and the stronger we can make those partnerships work, the better off we will be. The model that we're studying, that Councilwoman Parker and actually Councilwoman Gim have co-sponsored with me, studies a program that is over 100 years old in Europe, in Germany in particular, and it is one that has been most successful. So I would be very, I'd love to be the spearhead that brings that all here, but it takes a lot of people to buy into the program. And Council President, I am finished, thank you very much. I do welcome everyone here, the school board, and also President Wilkinson, thank you for attending, and I think this is a great opportunity for a great dialogue for betterment in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Chair Recognizers Councilman, Don?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure you're positive you don't want to eat before I speak. And I wanted to thank you, Council President, Mayor Kenny, Dr. Height, Chairperson Wilkinson, and the school board. And the school board, all of you really owe a, we owe you a debt of gratitude, and we're thinking about doubling your salaries, just so you know. But you're all volunteers, so we really appreciate that volunteerism, it's great. And I just want to say, the presentation of the financial material is one of the best I've seen, so thank you to Uri Munson. And I know that last year, I believe, we went from a BAA 1 rating to an A2 on Moody's, which is phenomenal. We went from negative to stable, phenomenal, I hear we're going to even get better, and those are all good things. I've now visited over 61 schools, and what I see is maybe different than what the press sees. What I see is teachers teaching, I see kids learning, I see principals doing a great job, maybe not perfect, but 95% of the time, I see a school system that's operating really well. That's what I've seen, I'm taking that from firsthand experience, and so my comments are going to be based around that. But I see a lot of good things happening in our school system, so I want to commend all of you, and I hope that continues. In your priorities, you have four categories of priorities, I'm going to try to address my questions within those priorities. So under the student achievement, I've said for a while now, there is four goals that I would like to have in the school district, and that is personal financial literacy, and I've talked to Dr. Height about that, teaching tech and coding, teaching entrepreneurship, and Harold Epps, our Commerce Director, had drilled it into my head, there's two ways out of poverty, education and entrepreneurship, and then job internship. I recently went to Vox 2300 Master, what a great school, I think they have ninth and 10th grade up and running right now, in an area that's not a great area, but every child there, they're trying to get them into a job one day a week as an internship, kind of like the Cristo Rey to a degree. And the more we can do in that category, the more we can have kids from ninth to 12th grade, one day a week, and I'll be happy to help coordinate with businesses, to have kids work in businesses, but the more we can do that, the better. Cristo Rey, which I love that school, has a 92% high school graduation rate from kids in poverty, and 100% of the kids go on to college, they work one day a week. Some of these kids from Cristo Rey who come to my office have never been in an elevator, let alone ever been in a restaurant. It's that experience that is invaluable. So that's one piece. The entrepreneurship, we have to figure out how we can teach that, I'm not sure how to do that, but that's a goal. On the tech and coding, I'm pleased to say we have 24 high schools with cooperation from Dr. Height and the school district, where we're teaching through Sylvester Mobley, coded by kids. We have 15 kids in every school, we have 360 kids now learning coding in the different high schools. We have now trained 66 teachers at the Federal Reserve on Financial Literacy, public school teachers. We have one school, Hancock Elementary, where they're trained from K to V, every grade, so it's financial literacy certified. And I know that Dr. Height maybe can speak about this, but it's very exciting news he told me this morning about the financial literacy side of the schools, and I'll let you maybe speak to that, Dr. Height.
Thanks, Councilman Don, thanks for the comments, too, from, and thanks for your school visits as well. So with respect to the financial literacy, after you and I had a conversation, as promised, I did contact PDE, and PDE now has a, standards in third through 12th grade for financial literacy. And what we're going to do is work with, although it's not required, they are worked within all of the other standards, and we're going to work with PDE as we are in the process of looking at how do, how do we include multiple things in our, in our standards and in our curriculum. We're going to work with the Federal Reserve Bank on, on their suggested curriculum and begin to implement that as a part of our work as relates to grades three through 12 and the subjects that are appropriate for that. And so, that's exciting news, and it is exciting that the state has not, I think they've always had it, but they re-emphasized it in third through 12th grade now. So it's, we're looking forward to doing that work with them.
Thank you. You know, I want to share another fact I just thought of, the Center City District did a report recently that said 66,000 people left the city last year. 81% who left did not have children, they left for jobs and taxes. 19% left who had children. So when we keep hearing that people are leaving the city because of the school system, I'm not so sure that's accurate when you look at those statistics. That's a very compelling fact, last year, that only 19% left because of kids. Let me, let me speak about, I don't know if, I didn't see it in your priorities, but I'm sure it's one of your goals, and that is the high school graduation rates and also the post-secondary rates, and I'm assuming, I know the last two, three years they've been increasing, do we have goals set for the next three to four years on increasing those?
Yes, we do, and it's over a five-year period of time, so we're trying, our goal is to get it to 80%.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
And the five-year plan, and it runs five years because of the financial plan.
On the area of transparency, and I was looking at the numbers of quality schools in the four different categories that you indicated, but I also want to call to your attention, last year, when we had budget hearings, you sent us information saying that, at that time, could have changed, we had four schools below a 30% capacity, we had 10 schools below 40% capacity, and we had 29 schools below 50% capacity. My question is, and I don't know the answer, just asking the question, of those 29 schools below 50% capacity, how many of those schools are in that intervention category or watch category? And could we do an overlay to see if the, some of those better schools, the model schools and, and the reinforcement schools, could we move some of those schools in the watch and intervention into the other better schools where we might have some capacity? And is that, you don't have to give me an answer today, but I would like to just see if we could do an overlay and see if that's even feasible, so we do two things, we would cut our overhead, but also, we would dramatically help those kids in the, in those poorer schools to be in better schools.
Yes, and in fact, we actually have had some experience with that, and we've done that now in several places, and we've done that with respect to Hill Friedman, we've done that with SLA, and we have a current project in place to look at the capital plant of Ben Franklin that could also house a school that is now in a leased facility, SLA, Center City. And so we are looking at ways to do that, and yes, a high majority, a high percentage of those students that are under 50% utilized are in that category, and many of them are high schools.
Because if I was a parent, I mean, I am a parent, but if I was a parent of a child in the public schools, and my child was in one of the watch or intervention category, and you said to me, well, we're going to move your child to the model school, but it's 10 or 15 blocks longer commute, I would say, no problem, I want him in the model school. So if that's an opportunity for us to look at, I think we should really take a good look at it. In the financial area, am I okay on time, Council President? Okay. In the financial area, I was just curious, and I don't know where, is Uri still here? He's still there. He may want to answer this question. I was wondering why the local tax revenue in the, in the numbers was down, it seemed to be down from the city's projections. Unless I'm reading it incorrectly, I don't know. On the real estate tax collections, is that down or is that up, this year versus last year?
So, if you're comparing to our adopted budget, which may be some of the confusion, and we do have some comments in the quarterly report trying to explain this, because this is going to be an issue, the budget that the SRC adopted was in May before city council completed the final city budget. At the time, we, that budget was adopted based on the mayor's proposal, which included the property tax increase. So when you're comparing, and that's actually the first footnote under that chart, so it's, current projections obviously less than what was in the adopted budget, but if you compare to what was in the five-year plan document that was adopted after... the five-year plan document that was adopted after Council adopted the city budget, we're pretty much right in line with where we thought we'd be.
And are you also on track with the area of collection of delinquents? Because I know that's a category in your budget.
We're still, we're still consistent. Our projections for there haven't changed from where we were at the end of June.
Okay. And, because I know the Revenue Department has done a good job in increasing the collections, which helps the school district. From like, three years ago, they were at 89. Today, they're close to 96, which is pretty good. We want to get to 98. But they're also using that this council approved, sequestration, that should help your collections, where we go after delinquent landlords, have the tenants redirect the rent to us. On the area of the debt, if I read this correctly, are we about 1.7 billion of debt right now?
There's about 1.7 billion of debt associated with buildings. I mean, there's total, our total outstanding debt is probably higher, is higher than that.
Associated to building, and building payments are about 297 million in that range?
Our total debt service is right around 300 million a year. And if you look over the five-year plan, it projects out based on the borrowing schedule that we have projected as well.
Okay. And is there any kind of goal or plan from the school board to figure out how we can lower that monthly obligation? I know that Yuri's done a great job in refinancing and lowering rates, but as far as, do we have schools that are currently closed that we could sell? Are there already in our pipeline right now to sell?
I think there are, and I know the board has done this, and certainly, the Board President can speak to this, but has looked at issues of where we have buildings, surplus property, making sure that what may have been surplus at one time, and obviously, as Philadelphia neighborhoods are constantly changing, is it a property we may want to keep for other use, making sure that it's being used with the best intent of the neighborhood in coordination with the city and council. And at the same time, looking at, if there are properties that are not being used as surplus, the district has no intent to use to decide what the proper use of it is, sell it, relieve the debt. I mean, the first thing we have to do is defees any debt associated with the building sale, which we've done in the past. And that's, obviously, that's one area that we're constantly looking at, is making sure that if we have, not even underutilized, but nonutilized buildings, that we're actually making decisions on what to do with them.
You want to also talk about the ESCO project? We came up with the idea of, you know, we've been working with, with the city's energy authority around, you know, energy savings, and you want to talk about where we are with that?
Or you want to talk briefly about?
I think.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning. Daniel Floyd, Chief Operating Officer. So last year, we did a pilot program for ESCO at three locations. We just released our RFP a month ago. We are looking to pilot, to do another ESCO project at up to 20 schools. We actually have a MWBE fair this Thursday because we are looking to have a stronger local Philadelphia presence in that, in that work. We're modeling our ESCO project in a way for it to be replicable. So we're looking at doing schools with a high return on investment to help pay for some of the larger outstanding capital needs that are happening at the other schools. So two high return on investments, two high HBAC schools, where we need to do a lot of infrastructure around temperature control and heating, and the remaining of the portfolio to address a large number of the outstanding capital needs that are happening in the schools.
That's great. I just want to comment on the...
I'm sorry, Councilman. Wait. I thought you were done.
Okay. Just the last question is, this round. The way I look at the vacancies, and I'm going to, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have right now, I guess, 19,337 positions, of which 18,210 are filled. So we have about 6% overall vacancy. But when you look at the teacher category, as my colleague pointed out, we're only about 8/10ths of 1% vacant on teachers. Very low. The area that we seem to be low is the school support, where we are about 10% low, which is dragging the numbers down. I'm not sure what school support is, but is that a difficult position to fill?
Yeah, those are the positions that, in some cases are in, well, it used to be in custodial, but we've actually begun filling those positions. But they're all of the other support positions, like aides, the individuals who, sometimes at bus aides or classroom aides. I think we have filled the climate support positions, but I'd have to get you the detail on that, Councilman.
And my point is, once you take that out, your numbers are phenomenal.
Right.
That's dragging down the numbers.
I'll also add, we just had for school support positions, a job fair with PHA at the John Street Center, and had 70 individuals make application as a result of that, and they're all qualified for those types of support positions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Can I, one quick comment? So I wanted to thank you for your, for bringing light to this idea of the narrative around public education. I think it's really important, you know, as a resident of Philadelphia with a young child, a three-year-old, who will go into the school system, I'm hyper-aware of and hyper-involved in this conversation of, should I stay or should I go? Whether it's on the playground, or at the library, or with neighbors. And it is something that I think is being under-discussed on the public scene. And I think part of it is this false narrative. A lot of it is making decisions based on fear and the fear of something that's not a reality. I agree with you completely that there's wonderful things happening in the school district, oftentimes behind walls that individuals will never penetrate, right? That they will never set foot in that local neighborhood school, or the charter school, or whatever good school it is. And so I think it's critical, what you're talking about is the narrative of what drives it. Because no matter how much the numbers improve, and it's great, and it's, you know, in this upper momentum of improvement, but no matter how much, I do have a fear, as a young resident here in Philadelphia with a young child, that the narrative is going to trump that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief, because I know we're trying to get through this. But I feel the historic nature of this meeting requires that I put some of the big issue, policy issues on the table. I want to commend the new board and Dr. Height for all the progress that we've made. The other day, as I drove my son for his ride back to Penn State, he was telling me how the public school kids, they're very competitive here, but when they get on a Penn State campus, how they rally around each other and work together. And they've taught me some new language, you know. He says, "Mom," and he's challenged me on public education around historically marginalized communities, and challenging the status quo and really being all-in. I hope that this historic nature of the new board, council, and the administration, we can buy into this all-in, right? So I'm all-in for the work that needs to be done. But I have three questions, one that I want to answer today, and the other two that I want us to really talk to, talk about in the budget process. One is, you know, our ability to really get to a student-weighted formula, right, versus what we have, if we're going to talk around real equity in schools, right? And I think that we have to have that conversation between how we fund schools now and what a student-weighted formula would look like. And the differential, so that as we make investments in the future, we really are getting to a better place on equity. And I know it's very nuanced, staffing issues and so forth, but I think it's important that, for the new board, for us to know what those numbers are and the discrepancy. And so I'd like to know if that is even possible as we enter this new budget. The two other questions that I think we need to talk about, and I think Councilman Dom alluded to this, you know, we've built buildings in different neighborhoods than their founding neighborhoods, and this whole catchment area, realignment, feeder pattern situation, I know is a monster, but I think if we're really going to have a conversation about a good school in every neighborhood, that exercise needs to take place. And, you know, for those of school board members who are on those committees, I welcome the opportunity for us to really get there, right? I have kids who live across the street from one school, but go to another school because of these patterns. And if we're going to make schools really neighborhood anchors, then we need to be prepared to take that realignment approach. And then lastly, is a conversation I have all the time around, really buying into a real bilingual education program with dual immersion, where we stop being parochial around our English dominance and really support kids in their native language and in their acquisition to English. And so I look forward to that. I put it on the record every year, because I think that if, if, you know, having a language requirement without really fulfilling the goal of making our kids and preparing them for the global world takes more than just an agreement that that is a necessity, but at some point, we have to start reflecting it in our budget line items. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and hello to each of you. It's great to see you. Dr. Height, I want to start with an issue that I've been talking about since I've been a member of this body, and that's on page 14 of your presentation. You talk about key recruitment and retention strategies. And I appreciate you talking about the hiring of teachers, school leaders, who reflect the diversity. And you give us some percentages relative to people of color, right? If you had that information now, it would be great to know, but if not, can you forward to members of council at another time, just an overview, a very detailed overview of what those demographics are? If it's 30% of new teachers are people of color, how many are African-American? How many are Hispanic? How many are Asian? Because that, too, is very important for us to know, particularly with the concern that I hear often. And I want to know, what is the, what is the tone like relative to the recruitment of African-American male teachers in the school district? And just, and I know, you know, Philadelphia is not, not alone here. This is like, very much a national crisis, and particularly in urban areas. So how is that looking with the school district of Philadelphia?
We've made a lot of progress in that area by establishing partnerships with those institutions, and by going to other places and recruiting their African-American males to come to Philadelphia. And I think that we've done some work with other entities that are inclusive of other educational groups in the city, like the work that the fellowship is doing, the work that is being done now with the University of Pennsylvania, who is going to be looking at a internship program for teachers of color, for male teachers of color, as a matter of fact. The, but I do think, though, that, Councilwoman Parker, we're not going to start getting at this issue until, and someone said it earlier, like, changing the, changing the conversation about teaching and encouraging young people to be teachers at early ages. And when I say early ages, I'm talking about even as elementary school students. And I mean, I want, somebody should, somebody other than me should be telling my eight-year-old grandson that he could be a good teacher one day. And I think we have to start rebuilding a brand, if you will, for teachers, particularly teachers of color, particularly male teachers of color, so that those individuals see themselves in that role. And we never tell them that, we tell them just the opposite. And I do think that that has to be a part. The second thing, I think, and something that we're working on right now, is how do we actually then make commitments to our graduates from Philadelphia schools to help support them through college so that they can come back to us to teach? And we actually are working with that, I mean, working to design that, working with Temple and the Community College and other higher education entities to talk about how we can make that a part of what our young people go to college for in order to come back, particularly with males of color.
Well, listen, I appreciate that response, Dr. Height. I did not know about the recruitment at the University of Pennsylvania. Now, that is a partnership that is worth being raised, and hopefully, we can see it duplicated with other institutions of higher learning in this great mecca of higher ed that we are fortunate to be in. And I will definitely be communicating that to leadership within my district, but those demographics are extremely important for us, because if I say to them, you know, 32, the district is doing better, 32% of the new teachers are people of color, you know, and then when I'm in Olney, which is my mini United Nations, they begin to say, "Well, Sherrell, you know, you know, how many of them are Hispanic? How many African-American? How many are from the Caribbean? How many are from the continent?" And I want to be able to give them that kind of detail. The next page, if you can, turn to page 18. And I was so very happy to hear you mention in your testimony that 50% of the buildings are over 70 years old, right? So the buildings in the school district of Philadelphia are no different than Philadelphia's aging housing stock, right, Mr. President? And we've been working very hard on home preservation here. And so I'm happy to hear you talk about health, safety, clean environment. But I will tell you, while our building engineers and the maintenance workers are trying to hold those aging buildings together on the inside, on the outside, while we're focused on neighborhood economic development, the community begins to say to us, "What about maintenance of the outside?" I'm talking about literally the details, things that seem very small, but, but you know the difference when you go from one neighborhood to the other, about whether or not the weeds are whacked around the school, whether or not, and I won't just talk generally about trash, but I'm talking about that level of detail. I would, because whenever you talk about that, it has to be somebody's job, right? And so we're talking about the budget. So I would ask members of the board, along with you, Dr. Height, and your team, as you come back before us and we go through this budget process, please find a way to include a very tangible and fiscal connection between schools and their impact on blight in neighborhoods, and how we can, you can help to develop some sort of opportunity that will help to maintain those buildings. Because if we're working on home preservation, Mr. President, and commercial quarter improvement, and then we get around the corner to the school, and it's not maintained, residents say, "Well, wait, what are we doing here?" So, and we just don't expect it to happen for free, Dr. Height. So that's why I said, please put a number to it, a strategy, and then let us know how we can be a part of the solution. Finally, Dr. Height, I want to conclude with something, where I'm putting you on the spot about it, but I've got to say it publicly. I've been out of town two times over the last eight months on conferences relative to middle neighborhoods. And each time I'm there, I get an opportunity to talk to some of the attendees, and most times, some local and state officials. And each time, our superintendent, and they know we have a new board, local control, but our superintendent, Dr. Height, comes up in conversations about how great he is. And I constantly have to say to them, "He has been here for seven years. He has provided consistent leadership to help us, bring us, you know, some fiscal stability, great team in Yuri, you know, dynamic relationship in Harrisburg, and he's not going anywhere." And so, Dr. Height, please just state for the, it's like a whisper campaign, honestly. You hear the lot, is he staying? Is he going? Is he being recruited? Are you leaving us anytime soon?
So, no. So, so, thank you for asking the question. I ain't going nowhere.
All right.
And so for, for some, they will clap, others will. But, but no, my, my work is here, and my home is here, and I plan to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. Thanks for agreeing. We got it on record. You get that? Got it. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. And I know that we've been here for a while, so I'm going to be brief. But first, I just really wanted to thank everyone for their leadership and for their work on the school board. I keep wanting to say SRC, but I don't want to say SRC, but just out of habit. But I want to thank everybody on the new board and the leadership for all of the work that you all are doing, and all the work that you're going to continue to do. And also my council colleagues, because, you know, it requires all of us to be able to fix public education in the city. There's no one body, the school board by itself, is not going to be able to do it, Dr. Height, or, you know, like any member of council. Like, none of us can do this alone. We all have to be all hands on deck. So I just wanted So I just wanted to, number one, say thank you. I also wanted to hear a little bit about community schools and what you're doing around community schools. I apologize if your answer may be redundant. I had to step out for another meeting on a very important subject. So if you could talk a little bit about community schools, particularly the social service aspect of what's happening in our neighborhoods. As you know, Philadelphia has a very large population of those who are living in deep poverty. And so I think that the idea behind community schools was that this was going to be a help, a lift to all the services that are needed on the ground in the neighborhood, and that it would make a significant difference. And, you know, the second largest budgetary item in the city budget really does center around social services, DHS and the like. So I wanted to see, or if you could give us some sort of inkling, as to how robust our community schools program is and, you know, what's happening, what can we expect in the future? If you could give us some information, that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. And thanks for the question, Councilwoman. So with respect to the community schools, I think, and that program is evolving, and it is now becoming more aligned to be able to respond directly to the needs of children and families in those school communities. And I appreciate the work that the Mayor's Office of Education has done to tighten that alignment. With respect to, and, community schools is providing a vehicle for us to work across agencies to actually help address and respond to the needs of families and communities. And so there are a couple of examples. So out-of-school time. Now, out-of-school time is being directed into areas around some of the same places where we have community schools, but also where data suggests there are opportunities for children after school. And the focus is on literacy at these out-of-school time programs as well. And so that coordination with recreation and parks becomes really important because then it's intentional and it responds or builds right off of what we're trying to do within the school day. Another exciting piece is the work that's happening with Community and Behavior Health, Intellectual Disabilities, CBHIDS, and where we've worked in collaboration with that organization to focus on communities that have high behavioral health needs. And it's not just high school behavioral health needs, but it's also high behavioral health needs within the community. And we have, as a result of that, now we have 22 social workers that are in schools that are funded through Behavior Health that then provide additional supports for children and their families in those areas. And the reason I use those two examples is because if we're able to more tightly align the work like that around the community schools, then that's actually the program we were looking for. And I do think that as it's evolving and getting better, we're doing a lot better with looking at data across all the agencies. And it is no surprise that in data where we have high absenteeism, there's also high curfew violations. And so we're able to then direct services to those locations to provide or to better respond to those issues. And so those are some of the examples, and we will have, at first, a health center up and running at Gideon, and that actually is being finalized in the next month or so. So we are excited about that. And it's a behavior health center that will be at Gideon as a part of the community schools work that's happening.
Is it a behavioral health center or a...?
Yeah, it's a behavioral health center because of the, because it's responding to, like, the behavioral health needs in and around that community for those, for the families and the children.
Okay. Let me just go back for a quick second to something that you mentioned, and we can have further conversation about this after the break. But you said 22 social workers were in schools right now? Okay, and these are just in community schools?
No, those are schools, and some of them are community schools, but others are schools with high needs with respect to behavioral health.
How many are in the community schools? How many community schools are there, and how many have...?
I'll get that information. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay, so you'll get that data back to us. Because again, when you said there were 22, I think that we had sort of expected that the community schools would have certain things: social workers, the DBHIS component, you know, the health center component. These were sort of like some of the standard pieces that each community school was going to have. And I kind of get the sense that that's not actually the case.
It's not currently the case, no.
So what will it be?
So the DBH, and those assignments were based on incidents and data that we are reacting to in the school district and that DBH is reacting to, CBH is reacting to. And so that's why those assignments were made. It was a data conversation around where was, where were the highest needs in terms of behavioral health services that we could provide to schools and communities based on data that both we see and that they're seeing.
Let me ask you a question. When we were selecting what schools would be community schools, we selected those schools in neighborhoods with the highest need. Is that correct, or...?
That's not, no.
That's not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of those were selected geographically, I mean, and some were to ensure that there was representation kind of all over the city, but it wasn't based on, it wasn't solely based on need.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, you know, making a decision, you know, resources are always limited, you know, in your business, in our business. There's never enough. And so, you know, as we make decisions going forward, I think that we just really have to make decisions based on need. You know, we're just not going to be able to, you know, geographically put things in neighborhoods that don't necessarily have the same level of need when you have areas that are completely without, you know, the services that are so desperately needed. For a lot of folks in the city, you know, the city doesn't always work for everyone equally. And where we can move those services around, I think we have to do that, so. And, you know, I'll come back with more questions after the break, but thank you very much.
And just to provide an answer to your question, because I did get it, seven of the schools are community schools, what the 22 social workers are. Seven are, seven are community schools.
Seven are not. Seven are.
Seven are community schools.
Okay.
The rest are not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just real brief follow-up on the community school issue, and I know this is actually a program that was initiated by the city. The, it was a recent conversation I had with the administration with respect to its community schools because the controversial sugar tax that members voted for to support recs and libraries and pre-K, the community school issue was a significant part of why I ended up getting on board with that tax, right? And my conversation with the administration was, is there capital dollars available for community schools? Because some of the models of some of the community schools will require some capital dollars, but I understand that that has not happened to date. As a matter of fact, with the Gideon School, it was dollars coming out of the school district's budget. So we will be, not trying to put you in the middle of anything, but I guess I am. But, I mean, I guess basically what I'm saying, if there is a need, you need to tell this council, because at the end of the day, when we have our budget hearings and we talk about rebuild, all the things associated with capital needs for community schools also, we need to know where the need is because we want to continue to ask for those, that support to be put in, in these community schools. Because at the end of the day, your budget is stretched enough to try and deal with school conditions. So frankly, I don't know why we would require you to spend capital dollars from the school district when you have, as you've mentioned earlier, all these schools that are 70, 100 years old, right? So if we have additional dollars as a result of sugar tax, we need to be spending capital dollars on community schools. All right? Throw your softball. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman, you got it?
I just wanted to echo that, but...
Yeah. Thanks, Councilwoman. We have, okay, Councilman, school is not here. We have Councilman Johnson, and then we're going to take a break.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I was watching my colleagues that came in after me get called before me, and I was kind of wondering what was going on, right? And I noticed, I noticed that I turned my light off. And so...
That's it, Councilman.
So, good evening, good afternoon, everyone. I just want to get, I'm going to get straight to the point of my question. And it revolves around school climate. The district plans for making sure our classrooms are conducive for learning for our students. And I had a couple of questions. Is the district still working with the Office of Safe School Advocates in terms of a partnership, in terms of school climate? Because I remember we had a hearing down in the conference room some time ago regarding that partnership and making sure that our young people are safe. And two, what's the district's plan to capitalize on the $60 million that Governor Wolf authorized for school safety through Act 44 recently in August? If you can just give me some feedback on those two things. And one last component, when a student, when a parent refuses a SAT referral, right, which is a student assistance program for outside services, how do we deal with that? Like, if the parent says, listen, we don't want the outside service, but the child is still inside the classroom, it's going to be a problem child, how do we deal with it? Because that also impacts the school climate.
So I'll take them in the order. So to the first question, are we still working with the Safe Schools Advocate? Yes. We are still working and doing some work, most recently in, like, the Kensington neighborhoods around creating safe corridors for young people. All of the reporting things are still in place as well. I do want to highlight a lot of work that has been led by Karen Lynch and the Division of Student Services, that a lot of the training that has happened around trauma, a lot of the training that has happened around positive behavior and restorative practices, is also making a difference with respect to climates in schools. The, I will also add that we are also focused on talking about mindsets of adults who are working with children and making sure individuals don't see the circumstances of children as a predeterminant of what they're capable of doing, but instead have a growth mindset about, with the right effort and abilities and supports, then children can really succeed. But you have to train on those things. I want to acknowledge my colleague, Jerry Jordan, who is here as a part of the new contract with the PFT. It also requires everyone to be trained on in restorative practices as well. We would be one of the first districts in the country where every staff member would be trained in that procedure. And that's all about making sure that we are in tune with how children are feeling and giving them the ability to express those feelings in classrooms. The, what was the, the third question was...?
Third question was Act 44 and the significant amount of funding that was given based on Governor Tom Wolf.
Right. And I do think that the maximum amount that we could receive off of that is 6 million, is 10 million. It's 10%, so it's 60, I knew it was a 6 in there somewhere. So it's 10% of the 60 million, so the maximum we could receive is 6 million. We actually asked for 6 million, and we asked for the 6 million to, number one, help us with the training, to help pay for the training of all of the staff members around the restorative practices, to finish all of the camera installations where we don't have cameras or need camera upgrades in schools. And so that, and that pretty much spends most of that 6 million dollars. So we asked, we don't know how much we're going to be eligible for, but we did ask for 6 million of the 60 million, which is the 10% maximum that districts will receive.
And the last, last question, what does the partnership with the school district look like with members of our law enforcement community to make the connection between what's going on inside the schools and what's going on inside the neighborhoods? Because from a public safety and school climate perspective, and I'm on the ground, I see the connectedness of some of the conflicts that either resolve, either starts on social media from a school type of interaction and spill out into what's going on inside the neighborhood and vice versa. So I remember in the past, we were very aggressive about that plan to stop, you know, basically, to make, long story short, keep our young people safe all the way around the board. So where are we from that aspect?
I think we've done, I think we have, we're working in close collaboration with all of the agencies and especially the Philadelphia Police and SEPTA on these issues. The DA's office, we work very closely with as well. I think we've done a really good job in, like, the reactionary types of measures, like, so we see something online, we can get, we can get resources and assets to a place to stop that thing that we think will happen. I think we have to get much better at the preventative side of it. And then how do we establish the same types of conversations we're trying to establish in schools, in communities with multiple groups of young people, that then help prevent some of those things to happen, or help young people self-regulate around how to resolve conflict? And I think that is more of what we could be doing and have to do more of.
That's where I'm getting at, is that the direction we're going to be going in, I guess.
Yeah, so we are, so we are working with those groups in order to do those things. We're setting up, like, the restorative approaches that we're trying to do in schools, we're also trying to do in communities. We're working with, and trying to work with as many youth agencies as possible to talk through these types of things. It's been through those youth agencies that we have really received very good recommendations for ways to react and respond, but also ways to prevent those types of things from happening.
I want to wrap up on this because my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, my colleague, Council President Darryl Clark, we both sit on the Special Committee on Gun Violence, right? It's no secret that we are in a crisis. I lost at least three young people in South Philadelphia at the age of 15. And at some point in time, and again, it's all hands on deck, everybody working toward the common goal of having peace in our streets, peace in our schools, but, Council President, maybe we need to look at also, how do we step up our efforts to make sure that while we working in partnership with the school district, but specifically around violence prevention, that the proper outside agencies are working in partnership with the school district so they can take that intel of what's going on outside over the weekend, so it don't spill inside the schools, but also vice versa. I know we've invested a significant amount of money on opioid crisis, which is definitely needed, but also I'll always not be shy about that same level of commitment to making sure that from a violence prevention standpoint, we're putting up the dollars behind effective programming, right, that will specifically target preventing the escalation of violence that we're seeing, whether it's inside the school or it's inside the neighborhoods. And so, Dr. Height, we'll follow up with you as we go into the new year to figure out how can we be supportive from that aspect.
And we do have a, we do have, Councilman, we do have a member of our team who serves on the Violence Task Force. And my understanding, the task force is also working on a plan, but that individual is Karen Lynch, who's our representative as a part of the Violence Task Force. And then I was also having this exact same conversation with Dr. Farley yesterday in a meeting that we had to talk about these types of issues.
Now, we did take Karen Lynch up to an outstanding, I'm going to give her kudos while she's not here, so...
She's here.
Oh, she's here? Give her her props because, and it's been an ongoing issue, we are trying to, again, prevent violence inside our schools by going out into communities. And she also went up the grader for it with us to work with the lifers, so we could try to find ways to have that connection from those who've been through the streets to be a positive, who want to be a positive influence on our young people, so they don't go down that same path, but also bring those types of acts of violence inside the school system. Because at the end of the day, we want to work towards saving all our young people that we can, but also as parents, right, we want our children to go to schools that's safe, at the end of the day. And I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of being called to speak out of visual for a young person who haven't even had a chance to see light. a visual for a young person who haven't even had a chance to see life. And, and again, that's an issue that I believe we have to work aggressively together, not just one individual, all of us, because at the end of the day, that's the future of our city at stake. Yeah, that was one last good, smart question that I did ask that he kept me on track on. When parents deny the services that's provided to troubled youth for outside services, how do we deal with that? Because that child will still be inside the classroom. And if my son is trying to pay attention and this young man or this young lady is disrupting the whole class, then my son don't learn. So how do we deal with that?
Yeah, so, so Councilman, part of, part of the program that I was describing to Councilwoman Bass was the program that we have in partnership with Community Behavior Health. And that program actually, in addition to the social workers in those communities, they also have family liaisons, and I may be announcing, pronouncing the term wrong, but there's an individual who's an advocate for those families that in many cases begin to build the trust with the families so that we can help them navigate the services that are available. And at those same schools where we have the social workers, we also have these positions for individuals to work directly with those parents, for, for family members who, for whatever reason may distrust, may not, may have had a bad experience, but to work with those parents, because the important point is to get the child connected with the service. And that is also a position that is a part of what we call the STEP program. It includes the social workers, this family liaison individual to help navigate that process. And so they go with them through the process, they advise them through the process, and they work in connection with that social worker that I was talking about.
If there's total denial or resistance, what happens?
Um, so if it's total denial, then we have to, we have to do other school-based things to provide services to that young person. And those, those school-based things then are things that are associated with the counselor who is at the school or other climate support staff who are at the school, or we devise a plan for that child to ensure that they have the structure and the supports they need in order to be successful.
Thank you, Dr. Height.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gem. I believe you want to acknowledge someone.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to, you know, we dealt with a lot of heavy issues, but wanted to end on this very positive note for the morning about a young woman who's here in the audience with us, who certainly speaks to the testament of hope, perseverance, resilience, probably all that is very good in the world and what happens when a city and public institutions and especially our school district lifts up all young people. And I just want to acknowledge the amazing Ania Moore, my former intern, who's behind me here. She is, to the testament of the School District of Philadelphia, the fourth, the fourth recipient of the Rhodes Scholarship from the School District of Philadelphia in the last five years.
She deserved her one.
And, of course, you know, it's amazing to have four Rhodes Scholars from one school district in five years. Of course, there are two here. Jordan Connell was the first in 2015, and 2017, 2018, 2019 is extraordinary. But if you haven't had a chance to read Ania's extraordinary story, please take a moment to read it in the paper. She was on Radio Times this morning. She gives all of God's glory, grace, and gratitude to her late parents and her late grandparent, grandmother, you know, who are with her and all of us in spirit. And we're just so proud of what she's been able to do. We're grateful for a district, and it's a reminder of what happens with all the possibilities of every single young child in this school district of Philadelphia and the extraordinary opportunities. And Ania, you'll be going on to Oxford. It'll be amazing, and we can't wait to welcome you back to Philly.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We're going to take a break. We'll be back here at 2:30.